Trying to figure out if we're having technical difficulties or not with the screening. Good afternoon, everybody. Happy Thursday. Okay. You all will give us about a minute or so. We'll get started.
I think Beverly's gone to the back. That's good.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, City of Durham, North Carolina. Welcome to our City Council Work Session for Thursday, October 6, 2022, here at now 1:07 PM. We welcome those who have joined us in chambers, and we also welcome those who are joining with us virtually. And I will now ask our Madam Clerk, would you please call the robe?
Mayor O'Neill.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Por Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Councilmember Williams is a bit delayed. He'll be here momentarily.
He's en route. All right. I will now recognize any of our council and of my colleagues for announcements. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Javier.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see a pretty full house for a Thursday afternoon. I have a couple of announcements. I just wanted to say thank you to the county for hosting their annual, well, I guess it'd been a little bit of a hiatus, their Durham County Farm Tour. It was a really wonderful morning to spend with some of our county commissioners and seeing what some residents are doing, a lot of them in the city limits with their urban farms. So that was a cool morning. Also, I think we're going to have a long session today, and so I brought the snack basket from upstairs. Councilmember Freeman has it down here, so if you get hungry, we will pass it down. And then finally, today is the Durham City-City County Cross Country Championships. Riverside is the reigning champion, Royal Pilot's role. And I may have to leave early. I'm waiting to see what time my kid is running. I hope, I think we might be done by 5:00, and if not, I may have to leave around then. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll continue to look to my right. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, ma'am, and to my honorable colleagues, everyone in the chamber, and those who are watching either on TV or our now-recovered internet connection. Madam Mayor, I want to just celebrate a bit today Durham's participation in a national pilot program of guaranteed income. Today, Mayor's for Guaranteed Income released initial numbers of about 20 to 24 American cities that are participating in guaranteed income pilots. Our city Durham is one of those cities. Madam Mayor, I'm very pleased because I think the numbers bear out and push back against what some had forecasted, that this would be a subsidizing of pathology. What it actually turned out to be is a subsidizing of people trying to live their lives and pay bills and pay rent and buy food and clothes for their families, because economically stable people make better neighbors. So on today, I just want to congratulate Durham. I also want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for your assumption of leadership, still seeing this as a priority and important for our city to participate in and leaning in and continuing to lead us in supporting this initiative. Full disclosure, the numbers look good after six months, I believe. I think they're going to look the same after we complete this pilot in a year, and I'm forecasting or telegraphing now to my colleagues and to citizens that I hope this is something that we as a city will consider codifying and looking for ways to continue doing this root cause initiative, a root cause initiative that does not involve some of the more traditional things we've argued about in the city when it comes to reducing crime, when it comes to expanding opportunity. But here's a real boots-on-the-ground, money-on-the-table initiative that is doing well. I also look forward to Durham joining our voices with our colleagues around the country to making a case to our national government that this should be a staple of our national life and should be codified as part of federal policy as well. So congratulations, Durham. I want to congratulate those participants and continue to wish them well as they rebuild their lives. A final factoid, the recidivism rate is about 30% in our country. Our focus population, our justice-involved individuals here in Durham that are receiving these payments, thus far, we've had a zero recidivism rate of those folk participating in this pilot. I am not suggesting that there's a hard causal link, but I am suggesting that there's some correlation to it. So let's continue to do the good work. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, Durham. Congratulations Step Up Durham as well, who's leading our efforts in running this magnificent pilot here in our city. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The numbers, I agree, look really good, and we look forward to seeing more of the data as it comes forth through this pilot. So thank you for your leadership. I'd also like to give a shout out to Ms. Amber Wade in the mayor's office, who's been intimately involved in this as well to step up. So thank you for great leadership. Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson, followed by Councilwoman Halsey Hyman.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, everyone. This is a bigger crowd than we usually get. Good to see so many faces. If anyone needs help holding their baby, I'm your girl. Just wanted to announce that at our next work session, I will be bringing, I would like to bring a resolution for consideration by my colleagues in support of the graduate student workers at Duke University, who are once again trying to form a union and enter into a collective bargaining arrangement with Duke, and would like the consent of the council to bring that, to bring that resolution to our agenda at our next meeting.
Time with me. Everybody giving a thumbs up. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all. I'll get it to you as soon as I can.
Good afternoon. To, thank you, Madam Mayor, to Mayor Protem and to the rest of my colleagues, and also to our residents and people. I want one of those green buttons, but I guess we can get that later, right? I just want to announce that it is, October is Economic Education Month, and so as a member of Durham City Council, I will continue to advocate for the development of well-paying jobs, increased subsidy care, and equitable and high-quality services that alleviate economic burdens for Durham residents. So I again want to stress that this month is, October is Economic Education Month. The other announcement is, it's with a heavy heart that I take a little privilege to announce this. I lost one of my mentors the other night by the name of Dr. Pamela Danny, and she was very instrumental in my life in terms of social work, higher education, and had over 35 years of social work in Raleigh and the Durham area, and also very, very, an ally to people of color in HBCUs. She was a vice president of Academic Affairs at one point, but very instrumental in me also obtaining my doctorate in 2015 from Walden University. And so it's really important for us to just highlight mentors. I remember when I was appointed in May, she emailed me and she said, "You rock for social work." And so I just want to say the importance of mentor. I wouldn't be sitting here without people who wrap their arms around me. And so in the name of Dr. Pamela Danny, who was one of my mentors, who were, was very much, like I said, very much inspirational in educating social workers in Raleigh and in Durham, I just want to say this in her memory. Dr. Pamela Danny. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to see if Councilman Williams has any announcements for this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize for using my magical powers to delay the technicalities of the sound system until I could get here. It is economic education time of the year. We want to make that every, all throughout the year as a culture. So kudos to my colleagues for showing up today, and I promise they'll be on their best behavior. And we have a lot to talk about today. I wanted to also shout out, I think we missed this the last meeting, that the Durham Bulls just won a major, major, major championship, international championship. I just wanted to shout them out for doing what the Bull City does, and us be the best. So looking forward to celebrating with them and hopefully, you know, having some good times with them and, yeah, continue the greatness. Looking forward to it.
Thank you so much, Councilman Williams. Now we'll turn to our, did I miss any other announcements? Everybody okay? All right. We will now recognize our city manager for any priority items she may have.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the Durham City Council. I do have a few brief announcements before I go to my official agenda items that I would like you to consider for accepting, but I will first go to the announcements today, in addition to some of the things that have already happened regarding the streaming. Spectrum Channel 8, where many of our residents view our council meetings, is not currently available. Spectrum is working to resolve the issue as soon as possible, but viewers can still watch the work session on Frontier and AT&amp;T U-verse, as well as the city's website and the city's YouTube channel. The link to the meeting is on the front page of our website, which is www.durhamnc.gov. I would also like to acknowledge the collaboration last week in preparation and response to the storm, the Hurricane Tropical Storm event. Staff from our police department, our fire department, our general services department, our water management, both our emergency management and communications staffing, along with coordination with Duke Energy, provided service to our residents who were impacted at a very high level, and I would like to just acknowledge all of those, those employees and partners in helping to restore power and make sure our residents were safe. And finally, in the announcement section, the city of Durham and the family of Solid Waste employee Frankie Jones have experienced the loss. As Frankie passed away earlier this week after a brief illness, we offer sincere condolences to his family. He was a dedicated public servant, a city employee, and he will be greatly missed by all of us. So I will next turn to priority items, city manager priority items, and I thank you for the privilege of those announcements today. First, agenda item number 19, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Fair Housing Cooperative Agreement fiscal year 23. The administration is asking that we suspend the rules and allow those funds to be drawn down from HUD in a timely manner. That's item number 19. Agenda item number 10, participatory budgeting, PB Durham Cycle III. A presentation will be made during this work session. Agenda item number 24, which is a presentation and ordinance to create a social district. The background section was added to your agenda memo. Then item number 26, the formal Wheels Skating Center assessment and a probable opinion of cost will be a presentation, and that will be scheduled at a time certain, which is at 3:00. Agenda item number 32, affordable housing, deep-dive presentation from Data Works, North Carolina, is a supplemental item, and it has been added, and a presentation will be received today. And finally, agenda item number 33, which is a repayment of a Neighborhood Stabilization Program III funds, Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant number 11-n-2189 to the North Carolina Department of Commerce, is a supplemental item, and it has been added to your agenda. Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank, thank you, Madam Manager. Per the mayor's directive, I'm going to carry this part of the meeting, and we acknowledge the manager's priority items. I think the action item that the manager identified was item 19, and we will come and take care of that. At this time, I'm going to yield to our city attorney for any priority items. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor Protem. Deputy City Attorney Fred Lamar here, sitting in for Kimberly Rayburg. There are no priority items for the city attorney's office?
Thank you, counselor. At this time, I'll yield to the city clerk for any priority items. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Madam, or Mr. Mayor Protem and Madam Mayor, as well as council members. It's okay. I wanted to let you know that the city clerk's office has no priority items today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Mayor, would you like me to read the items into the, thank you, ma'am. All right. We will now, I will now read into the record items on today's agenda, and then we will take care of the priority item from the city manager for the record. Under the city clerk's office, item number one, Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau, Discover Durham mayoral appointment. Item number two, Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners mayoral appointment. Item number three, Workforce Development Board mayoral appointment. Item number four, Durham Planning Commission appointment. Item number five, Recreation Advisory Commission mayoral appointment. Item number six, Racial Equity Commission appointment. Item number seven, Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee appointment. Item number eight, Approval of City Council Minutes. Under departmental items, Budget and Management Services Department. Item number nine, Request to, Request to Carryover Funding from fiscal year 2021 through 2022 to fiscal year 2022 through 23. Amend fiscal year 2022 through 23 budget, other grant project ordinances and internal service fund spending plans.
Like to pull that item?
That item's been pulled. Item number 10, Participatory Budgeting, PB Durham Cycle III. Under city manager's office, item number 11, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Project Durham, the city of books.
Like to pull that.
Item number 11 is pulled. Under Department of Transportation, item number 12, Interlocal Agreement for Procurement of Buses, Bus Equipment and Parts.
Like to pull that item.
Department of Water Management, Department of Water Management, item 13, Award of a Non-Professional Services Contract to Hydrostructures Professional Association for the Sewer Outfall Inspection Program, North Project. That one is pulled by citizen? Okay. All right. Item number 14, Amendment Number One to Contract 18648 with EMA Resources, Inc., for Handling and Disposal of Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant Residuals and Biosolids.
Like to pull that item?
Is that 14? All right. Item number 15, Town of Cary, City of Durham, Western Intake Partnership Water Treatment Pilot Study Agreement. Under Human Resources Department, item 16, Contract with Cornerstone On Demand, Inc., for the city's learning management system. Under Neighborhood Improvement Services Department, item 17, Amendment Number Three to Contract with ISAT Excelsior LLC for Equitable Community Engagement. Item number 18, Amendment Number Two to Contract with the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People, Inc., for Equitable Community Engagement. Item number 19, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fair Housing Cooperative Agreement, FY 2023. Item number 20, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD, FY 23 Fair Housing Partnership Initiative Grant. Item number 21, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Special Enforcement Effort Fund. Under the Office of Economic and Workforce Development, item number 22, Durham Workforce Development Board, DWDB, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WIIOA, Youth Program Operations Contract Amendment Number Three, Eckerd Youth Alternatives, Inc. Item number 23, Durham Workforce Development Board, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, North Carolina Works One-Stop Career Center, Operations Contract, Eckerd Youth Alternatives, Inc. Under Parks and Recreation, a present, item number 24, is a presentation and ordinance to create a social district. Under Technology Solutions Department, item number 25, Contract with Worldwide Technology, LLC for Metropolitan Area Network Design. Under Presentations from General Services, item number 26, Former Wheels Skating Center Assessment and Probable Opinion of Cost. Under Public Hearings from the City-City Planning Department, item number 27, 4214 Fayetteville Road Zoning Map Change. Item number 28, Consolidated Annexation Courtyard at Doc Nichols II. Item number 29, Permanent Closing of Water Street. Item 30, South Austin Avenue, zoning map change. Item 31, Consolidated Annexation Kemp Road Residential. Under supplemental items, from the city manager's office, item number 32, we will receive a presentation of, as part of our Affordable Housing Deep Dive from Data Works, North Carolina. From Community Development, item number 33, Repayment of Neighborhood Stabilization Program III Funds, Neighborhood Stabilization Program Grant number 11-n-2189 to North Carolina Department of Commerce, and I'd like to pull that. Are there in the reading of the agenda as printed? I have listed, Madam Manager, items number nine pulled by Councilmember Freeman, item number 11 pulled by Councilmember Caballero, item number 12 pulled by Councilmember Freedom, Freeman, item number 14, she's a free woman, item number 14 by Councilmember Freeman, and item number 33 by Mayor Protem. Does that comport?
That is what I have, sir.
All right. Very good. We do have an action item, Madam Mayor, from the, yes, ma'am. Colleagues, you've heard the request from the city manager to suspend the rules and vote on item number 19. I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Caballero, and a second from Councilmember Williams. Will indicate aye by raising your left hand? Any opposed? Rules are now suspended. I'll entertain a motion to move on item 19.
So move.
Second.
I heard a motion from, I believe, the mayor, Madam Mayor, and a second from Councilmember Caballero. Please indicate aye by raising your left hand. All those oppose? Motion carries unanimously. I yield back to the mayor.
All right. Thank you so much for tag teaming today, because we can move faster. We tag team. Thank you so much. We're now going to go to our citizen matters today and receive comment. I believe our first item will be item 11. Ms. Isabel Gessner will be speaking to us via the internet, I believe.
She is actually trying to speak on that item.
Not, not only.
Number 11, it's been pulled.
Okay.
Item 20. I don't think there are any regular citizens. So you have pulled, pulled item number nine.
Mm-mm.
Pulled item number nine. We'll start with pull item number nine. Here's a person.
Madam Mayor?
All right.
The book harvest is Isabella. It's the same person.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll start with item number nine.
All right. Item number nine has been pulled. And that will be the Request to Carryover Funding from fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
Item number nine has been pulled. And that will be the Request to Carol Funding from Fiscal Year 2021 to 2022.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one main question regarding the emergency watershed protection and watershed restoration project grant. And I just wanted to figure out exactly how far away from completion that it was because I acknowledge it should have, it should have gotten completed. I'm trying to figure out what the catch was that it didn't make it through.
Well, yeah, and this is a revision from the department, so I don't know specifically. Are you asking specifically about, so excuse me, Christina Riordan, Budget and Management Services? So are you asking specifically about the project? This is just a revision to the grant project ordinance, so there's. But are you asking specifically about the project? We can get that information from you from the department.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we will now move to item 11 that has been pulled. And we do have a speaker here, I believe. Ms. Isabel Gefner. All right.
Sorry, I thought we had a public speaker, so I was waiting for that.
That's fine. We will yield to our public speaker, Ms. Isabel Gefner. Ms. Gefner, are you able to hear me? I think she's listed as a resource person.
Mayor, Mayor O'Neil, Bertha Johnson, Deputy City Manager for Operations. We asked Ms. Gefner to be here to respond to any questions about this agenda item.
Thank you. And that was pulled.
Thank you.
Go back to you.
Just real quick, this is our first actual ARPA contract, correct? I just.
That is correct.
That's wonderful to see. I love this contract, love the project. I didn't have anything specific. I just wanted more information about the ARPA process because I realized it was the first one we'd had. And I was curious because I think that the person that we'd hired to help shepherd us through this process is no longer with the city. And so I'd been hearing from some of the other projects about how quickly we were going to be able to move some of this through. And so that's why I pulled the item.
So I would say, yes, it's been a long time. We've had the person we started with left and the person we hired after that person left. The biggest challenge has really been since we made the decisions, council made the decisions in May of 2022. The interim, the final rules from U.S. Treasury were effective in April. And so we essentially had to start over in terms of going back to the applicants and getting additional information as well as doing a risk assessment on all the organizations. There were a lot of other stringent rules that came about because we were now under the final rules. We also have had some challenges with the organization's re-sculping. The decision was made by you all to give each organization 70% of the funding. And so we had to go back to each organization and have them re-scope based on the reduced funding. In some organizations, because time had lapsed, really wanted to change their scope. They have gotten funding from other sources. There are some challenges with the organizations that were approved that below, had a lower score to try to get those organizations up to par, which we committed to you all we would do, finding fiscal agents for them. So there have been a number of challenges with our process as other local governments under the final rules, which we also had to create an ARPA policy, an internal policy, which took a while and amend some of our financial policies to adhere to the requirements of the U.S. Treasury final rules. So it's been a challenge. We plan to bring forward three or four in the next cycle. So look forward to those coming forward and hopefully, once we get, you know, in, on, you know, in the move in terms of getting those coming forward, we'll, we'll keep moving.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the information.
Thank you for the opportunity to share that with you all.
Thank you all. Any other issues? All right, thank you. All right, we'll nick, we'll turn to our next pull item, which was, I believe, pulled by Councilwoman Freeman, item 12.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And my main question is just specifically around, I guess, the interlocal agreement and figuring out if it's going to actually, if there's a way to on-ramp the supply diversity priority that we have in this, in this agreement or not.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. Councilmember, I believe your question is, does the fact that we're using the interlocal allow us for an opportunity to directly apply all of our laws procured to inclusive procurement? In the strictest sense, no, that's not the case. The idea behind the interlocal is to create the advantage of procurements that have handled at a different layer of government and in effect, piggyback off of that opportunity and then join, I'm sorry, I take that back. I have the, have the wrong piece in mind. Yes, that, that is the particular case. We're joining forces with other jurisdictions to make the bus procurement. And so in each of the, each of the individual jurisdictions that are participating in it will have opportunities for certain of the distinctions in their policies to be involved. So yes, our, our policy for that aspect will be involved with the procurement of the buses.
And I just, I just specifically just want to note or figure out how to note that price should not be the driving force, that how folks operate as organizations and what their, what their, like their diversity internally looks like. All of those should be factors in this and that's, that's all.
Okay, I, I, that's certainly understood. We'll take that in advisement. I do want to remind this, this is a bidding process and not one for RFPs. And there are federal regulations associated with the procurement as well, but we'll take your comment under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now to our, turn to our next pulled item, which was pulled by Councilwoman Freeman as well. Item number 14 Amendment Number One to Contract 18648. I yield to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Don Greeley, Water Management.
And my one question, I was trying to figure out whether this was on the city attorney's side or the city manager's side because it appears as if there was some kerfuffle around the item being pulled out of the contract.
Could you clarify that?
In the memo, it just noted that these items were pulled out of the original contract and so now we're going back to put the, this almost a million dollars out or back into this contract. And I wasn't sure if that was on the city attorney's side or in the city manager's side.
That was originally when we bid the contract out, we, we pulled that work out as part of the contract at the time. Our intention was to bid that out at a future date, but the degradation of, or the increase in material within the digester acceler- has accelerated. So we went back to the contractor and negotiated a price and we're amending the contract to, to include that work now. Does that make sense, I hope?
It does. Thank you. That makes more sense.
So much.
Thank you.
All right, and we now turn our attention to our last pulled item, item number 33 Repayment of Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and that was pulled by Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Johnson, good to see you, man. Thank you. First off, this, I want to use this opportunity to just publicly acknowledge the monumental amount of work that community development does, particularly with our forever home. And I know that it's voluminous over there in your department and you handle a lot of things. So I want to, I want to, anytime I get a chance to brag on a department, I want to take that opportunity. My question about this item, in reading the supporting documentation, I understand what happened. I just like a little more explanation as to why. Just in short, unable to provide certain information. Was it, was it a staffing issue or was it one of those things? Just wanted to know a little bit about the why we have to give this money back.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Reginald Johnson, Director of the Department of Community Development. In terms of the why, this is simple, Mayor Protem. It was a mismatch between our project and the funds. We accepted the money. The money was for low income persons. We had a project that, if you remember, that was mixed income. And one of the things we did with the money was to demolish lots, purchase lots, demolish lots. And then we re, what's the word I want to use? Reset the lots. So the money follows the land. And when one resets, resets the lots and then you set up houses and you sell them to a ma- a market rate buyer, you're not going to qualify for using this funds because you've used that fund, those funds to demolish land or demolish a house or purchase land that went to a market rate buyer. So you can't demonstrate that that, that you're in compliance. And that was by project design. And so you can't, so it's not a question of staffing. We couldn't get the information. The information is from a market rate buyer as an example.
Yeah, that, that sounds a lot better than the way the memo reads. It almost seems punitive on a part of the Department of Revenue. It almost, it raises the specter of ineptitude on our part. I just wanted residents and citizens to know that this wasn't just the department, you know, wrangling their hands or messing up, that this was, as you said, a mismatch. We used the funds for what we could use them for and we're sending back what did not match clearly stated and designed initiative and program goals. So that's all I had. Thank you very much. You know, whenever we, whenever we start giving money back to folk, of course, that, that raises.
No, you're, you're very right, Mayor Protem. I definitely agree with you on that.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield back.
All right, thank you so much. We're now going to turn to our presentations and I am going to check.
Madam Mayor, I'm. Madam Mayor, before we moved on, I did have a question for Reginald Johnson. Sorry.
And just to finish that statement, I'm going to put the social district presentation first.
And I appreciate, I also appreciate the question. I had, I had the item, but Mayor Protem pulled it first. I understand that the shift in how the housing was set up on the follow, like on the backside. The question I have is how many of these homes were set as market rate versus affordable? Because weren't some of them supposed to be affordable?
Yes, if you remember the project and for many of the new council members, it's been some time ago, in the south side, we had a revitalization and we built 48 homes. We worked with builders. 28 of those, 26 of those were, a majority of them had to be low to moderate income. The remainder of them were market rate.
And so of the 26, none of those dollars could be used towards, towards that project? Like towards that part of the project?
So it's not a question of the dollars to be used, it's the demonstration that the beneficiary, the actual person who lives in that, on that property that one used to demolish is low to moderate income.
So the demonstrate, so help me, help me, help me on this. The demonstration of who received the benefit in this project was not low to moderate income folks, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I ask one more question as well? Thank you, Reginald. I feel still a little bit unclear on why we didn't do this project in a way that would have allowed us to use all the funds. Can you talk about, like, was that a decision that was made? Was that an error? Like, how did we end up doing the project in a way that we weren't able to use all the funds that we had procured for the project?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Johnson. Remember, this project is at this point over 10 years ago, but if you remember, you may not remember, but I remember, the project came first, the funds came later. And actually, with this money, there was opportunity that the state had available funds that they were ready to move. And, you know, and like we've just experienced, the money starts moving, we start accepting, and sometimes we accept maybe a little bit too fast.
Okay, so it was a mistake on our part to take the money because we, the project that we were doing never qualified for this portion of the fund.
Certain elements of it.
Right, okay.
The way it was designed. And part of it was, like I said, we, one of my planning colleagues, maybe the, the way we redesigned, we reconfigured the lot. So we demolished lots, demolished houses, and then we reconfigured the lots.
Right.
So if there's two, two lots right here and we maybe split them in half or something like that to build additional houses in them.
So that, so that made things tricky.
Right, because if you have a market rate house on part of a lot.
The whole lot doesn't qualify.
But that doesn't, that doesn't qualify.
Okay, gotcha.
If we had known ahead of time and could do more integration, that would have been one of the solutions.
Okay, and given that this is 10 years old, I'm sure y'all have done plenty of due diligence on whether we could use the money another way. Yeah. Sad, but necessary. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I have just one real quick follow-up question as well. Apologies, Reginald, I, I missed the, I caught the 26 for low to moderate income housing, but what was the total of the housing?
It was a total of 48 houses and 26 of them were low to moderate income.
Thank you.
Were sold to more low to moderate income buyers.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
As I indicated earlier, I want to try to change the, I want to change the order of presentations. We have a lot of business owners from downtown Durham as well as some other folk in the audience that probably want to kind of move things along so they can return to their businesses. So we will turn to our speakers this afternoon. And we have, first up, I will ask for our Senator Mike Woodit, who will come to speak to us about the creation of a social district here in downtown Durham. We do have a number of folk on the internet as well and some who have signed up on the internet but are here, but we'll get to you all.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Thank you for recognizing me. I was looking forward to the presentation, so I'm going to hang around and maybe at least see some of it. But to Mayor Protem and to the members of the council, it's always great to be back in Durham City Hall. I came this afternoon to express my support for the social district proposal that is before you all. When we worked on House Bill 890 and I was an integral part of that team last year, I was always thinking of Durham because I knew that our city would be a perfect place to have a social district. I remember some years ago, somebody will have to help me remember, when we did the Business Improvement District, but when I sat in the seat Dr. Hyman now occupies, we worked very hard on the Business Improvement District. And that was a great step forward for our downtown businesses, the administration and conduct of business downtown, and it has been a great boon, I believe, for downtown and for the city. I believe the social district proposal before you all will take us to that next level and is going to be a great, will be something very important for us. We've seen so many other cities already adopt this. Greenville begins their social district this evening, actually. We've seen towns big and small from Huntersville and High Point and Conapolis and Norwood and Newton and Salisbury, all the way up to Raleigh and Greensboro. The Charlotte City Council just a few weeks ago also took their vote and they'll be implementing theirs very soon. Even in, even in my Senate district, the town of Oxford has been up and running for a couple of months now and it has been a very, very big hit. So I just want to add my support. I know you will hear from plenty of other downtown businesses from DDI today as well. I'm sure your staff will have a recommendation for you forthcoming, but I would urge you to act swiftly to approve social districts for downtown Durham. It is yet, as I said, the next step up for us in having vibrant and continue to have lively downtown. I do have one bit of caution before I take my seat, though. The requirement of the contract, to me, seems a little bit prescriptive and was not exactly what I think the intent of House Bill 890 was. I know you all have some concerns, which is why I'm curious about seeing the staff presentation. I'm not aware that other cities are doing that. I think Greensboro's agreement for their social district was just a couple of pages long. So I hope in the intervening couple of weeks before you all act on this, that you'll look at the prescriptive nature of having a contract. Be happy to share my thoughts on it away from the meeting and I don't want to take up so much time here. But I do hope you all will think twice about the contract and a lot of the prescriptive things, I believe, that are being required for that. But otherwise, ladies and gentlemen, the council. But otherwise, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I believe it's full steam ahead. Let's get our social districts in place here in Durham. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Senator Woodard, for being here today and for your longtime support of Durham City and now the state of North Carolina. We, I'll call three names at a time, so just so you'll know how we're moving. Mr. Roberto Matos will be first, followed by Ms. Brianna Braley. And Mr. Amos Cooper Jr. will be next. And if you will come forward, you have three minutes. If you would just state your name and address for our records.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, City Council members. My name is Roberto Copa Matos, and I am chef and owner of Copa. It's a restaurant in downtown Durham. I've worked in the restaurant industry in downtown Durham since 2011. First running Old Havana Sandwich Shop, and then starting Copa in 2018. I was born and raised in Cuba, and I feel that I have been blessed to run my small businesses in Durham. I was trained in Cuba as a scientist and have dedicated my career as a small business owner to the farm-to-table movement. I support the social district initiative as an answer to the many of the problems that small businesses are facing today. Compared to 2019, Copa has seen its income reducing half, and our debt has increased significantly in the past three years. Most of that, most of that debt has been used in order to pay a living wage to our team members. Last month, Copa lost, last September, Copa lost more than $10,000 due to low business. The social district initiative has been proven effective in many other cities and states, not only by increasing revenues for food establishments, but also by making the community more resilient with different kinds of businesses, by improving or increasing the food traffic in the area, other businesses like gift shops, clothing boutique, boutiques, bookstores, and galleries. In fact, nearby cities such as Raleigh and Greensboro and others already have enacted, social districts, which means that many customers of ours will choose in many instances to go to those cities rather than to come to us. I am here today to ask that you pass this initiative. Many of us are facing a very difficult time, and you vote for the social district might help us pass through this crisis, which still is not over for us in the restaurant industry. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today. Ms. Bray, Brayley, Ms. Brayley.
Good afternoon. I'm Brianna Break, owner, brewmaster of Spaceway Brewing Company. My brewery is currently in Rocky Mount, North Carolina. I have a taproom in Rocky Mount. I was born and raised here in Durham and am working on opening a taproom here in Durham sometime early next year. I think the, I didn't get a button, but I do think that the idea of the social district is great for business downtown Durham. Looking to open my taproom on Main Street, like I said, early next year. When COVID hit, I was kind of just beginning to gain a following and foot traffic in my taproom in Rocky Mount. I had to close because of the shutdowns, had to let go of all my staff. Ended up having beer that I had to dump out because it sat for so long, I couldn't, didn't want to sell it to people. So I lost thousands of dollars in, in revenue. Still, still trying to recover from that. I think the district would increase foot traffic and help to the small businesses in downtown to recoup from all the losses from COVID. Like, I won't be serving food in my taproom, so customers could come and grab a beer for me and walk to another business and get food. And yeah, so I think the social district would be very important to helping businesses recover from the losses of COVID. And it will help to raise awareness of businesses, if people can grab a beer and, and walk around and check, check out what, what else is going on downtown. So I'm very strongly in support of the social district. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today. Mr. Cooper, Mr. Amos Cooper, and he'll be followed by Ms. Karen Casey, Mr. Adar Mueller, and Nicole Thompson instead of, who will be speaking on behalf of Ms. Megan Cain. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Amos Cooper Jr. I have lived and worked in downtown Durham since 2015 and operate primary business, Bull City Butler Concierge Service, and will be operating a new business out of 104 West Pear Street. And I'm here to show my support for the social district. I think it will encourage commerce, and many downtown business owners will speak today about having gone through the pandemic and still here, and I think it would be beneficial to try to encourage commerce and more activity downtown any way that the city has and can to continue to grow the vitality and be progressive in this great state of North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Ms. Casey?
Greetings, everybody, and thanks for having us. I am Karen Casey. I'm the owner of the Artisan Market at 305 on East Chapel Hill Street. I'm very excited about the prospect of social districts. Our store represents 59 local artists, and we have been in business for five years. Even though our business has seen customers returning, and I do have solid employees, we have still not been able to financially recover adequately at all from the almost one year of lost revenue. Every week, customers come in, they tell me they have not been downtown in years. They regularly ask me how long I have been in business, and I tell them it's been five years. I estimate that 60 to 70% of my customers are still visitors versus local, and unless there's a holiday or special event, that's what brings people out. So as an example, our revenue is about double on Third Fridays compared to other Fridays. So imagine if the community came downtown and stayed on a more regular basis, what that would do for all of us that have businesses downtown. My experience with those that come in is hearing how much they love our store and how much they love walking around downtown. But we do need to do as many things as possible to entice people to come downtown and to hang out downtown. So from my perspective, promoting downtown as a place to enjoy and to stay after dinner and drinks with friends is essential to driving people to come downtown and to my business staying afloat. Social districts give us another opportunity, opportunity to have a media push about the coolness of downtown, which we know we have. So I am 100% on board. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Casey. Mr. Mueller? Ms. Mueller, I'm sorry. Followed by Nicole Thompson of DDI. Jess Everhart will be after that. Sean Little, shameless.
Hello, thank you all very much. I am Adair Mueller. I'm the owner and founder of Durham Food Hall, which is at 530 Foster Street in Liberty Warehouse, right down the, the way. Hope everybody visits. We opened in May of 2020, just as the pandemic hit. We completed construction, we had multiple delays, completed in January, and I thought this will blow over no time, we'll just wait another few months, we've already done this, and very quickly realized we have no choice, we have to open. But Durham Food Hall was a $3 million project with 15,000 square feet and 12 different businesses inside, designed for community gathering, not the most optimal business to open in the beginning of a two-year global pandemic. With gathering discouraged and our main revenue stream, which was our bar, prohibited from operating, we lost $80,000 a month at our lowest points. All of this while maintaining full health insurance for all of our living wage employees, keeping people on salary and staff, trying to do the right thing. But it was, it was, I mean, completely awful. At this point, we're still operating with just 44% of our anticipated revenue, and we didn't qualify for 90% of the financial aid that was being offered because we couldn't quantify our lost profits since we weren't open prior to 2020. So it's, it hasn't been a fun time, and we're definitely still suffering in the thick of this. Saturday Farmer's Market has been our complete lifeline. I am so grateful and thankful to that market and that it continued all throughout COVID. Otherwise, we probably would have had to close our doors a long time ago. We need more of that attraction to downtown. We need more activities to downtown. We need more support of getting people back into our areas. We can't survive of just one day a week. And downtown used to thrive off of employee-driven traffic, which is still fairly non-existent. We see a little bit of trickling in through the lunchtime hours during the weekday, but it very quickly tapers off. There are no happy hours, no after drinks, after-work drinks happening, you know, just spontaneous gathering, and people aren't coming in regularly. You know, maybe they're coming into the office, if they are, once a week, once every two weeks, something like that. So we're just not seeing that regular continual traffic that we really need. And still struggling to dig ourselves out of this COVID debt, we really need your help and support and the support of the social district to increase downtown traffic and revenue for not only our downtown business, but all downtown businesses still trying to hold on. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Ms. Thompson? Be followed by Ms. Everhart, Sean Little, Nish LeBlanc.
Good afternoon, and thank you for letting me speak on behalf of Megan Cain, owner of Zen Succulent. She was unable to be here due to another engagement. Hello, Durham City, so Megan Cain, owner of Zen Succulent at 123 Market Street, Suite B. Hello, Durham City Council. My name is Megan Cain, and I am the owner of the Zen Succulent, a 100% woman-owned and black-owned neighborhood plant and gift shop with roots deep in downtown Durham. My business started completely online in 2012 after graduating from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, and I am proud to be over 10 years in business this coming November. Come by and see us if you have not already done so. I am elated to say that the hard work, I'm elated to say with the hard work of our staff, pivoting at the right time, and community support, our small businesses back to pre-COVID revenue and gearing up for what is trending to be one of our best holiday seasons yet. I love being a small business owner, and I absolutely love having my flagship location in downtown Durham since 2016. Her emphasis, not mine. As a retail business that does not serve alcohol, I am writing you in support of the downtown Durham social district and believe that it is a vessel to continue to move downtown Durham in a positive direction. As a Raleigh native that grew up only a stone's throw from the Durham County line, I frequently, I frequented downtown Durham throughout my years. I remember this very downtown having a much different skyline with boarded-up restaurants and dusty storefront windows and a lack of atmosphere. Downtown Durham has greatly made an effort to change that in the last 10 years, and we are now seeing the fruit of that labor with a new air of confidence. I am proud to see firsthand, as our downtown Durham business owner, as a downtown Durham business owner, that shift come into full focus to keep downtown positively growing with key and thoughtful planning for our businesses, residents, and visitors. That has been shown through initiatives like Third Friday, Spendable Shopping, the Spendable Shopping Gift Card, and various downtown-specific events that have had positive effects on our retail and restaurant industry. I believe wholeheartedly that retail and restaurants are the bloodlines that keep downtown Durham moving in this positive direction. The town, the downtown Durham social district will help amplify our retail and restaurants, many of which, like ourselves, who are just getting back on our feet after COVID, and increase revenue and visibility along the way. I have experienced this firsthand as a downtown Raleigh business owner, where we have a location on South Wilmington Street, which is a part of the downtown Raleigh social district. Since the social district started in early August of this year, we have already seen increased sales and visibility. Customers positively carry their adult beverages into our facility and end up purchasing from us. Many of these people have only discovered our space through walking and enjoying their beverage down our street that they may not have gone down otherwise. We have experienced more customers after 5:00 PM, which has contributed to our staff having additional hours. In conclusion, I am in full support of downtown Durham social district and excited for this opportunity for my small business. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. My name is Jess Everhart, and I'm the CEO of Jess &amp; Co. I live and work in downtown Durham and have lived and worked in downtown Durham for over a decade. What does that mean? I'm a resident, right? I am a customer of these incredible businesses, and oftentimes I'm called in to host guests and visitors from corporate America, early-stage startups that come into the city and show them what Durham is all about, the magic of the city. Again, I have many clients who, for my new business, who are coming into town and understand Durham as an innovation hub. They also understand Durham is a destination for food and beverage. And when they show up here and they get off the airplane, RTP, and they roll into town, they are looking for that energy. And oftentimes, they see it in other major metros that they are visiting because they are international travelers, international businesses. When they show up here, they're looking for that same matched energy. And right now, we don't have that in the same way. DDI has done an incredible job of getting us to this point. The businesses have done an incredible job of showing our visitors and our travelers a great time, even through COVID. Thank you. But we have to do more. We really have to do more. Tomorrow, you'll know, or maybe you won't, that there are going to be about 40 to 50 black entrepreneurs, early-stage startup entrepreneurs descending here into Durham. There's about 20 right now that are working at the Black Google Founder Exchange. So there'll be another 30 that'll be showing up here in Durham, and I'm getting text messages now, what are we doing? What's the energy? What are we about, right? And there's lots to do, but to have a social district and have that solidified with the support of the cities and in collaboration with the businesses can go a long way. So obviously, I'm in support of this. Thank you, thank you, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Sean Little, followed by Nish LeBlanc, followed by Sean Umstead.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Sean Little. I'm the owner of the 360 Approach. It's a wellness studio in downtown Durham. We do not sell food, we do not sell beverages, but we enjoy them very much. The only reason that my studio has still standing post-pandemic is the fact that we come together as a community to socialize and engage. The social piece is just as important as the exercise piece, and so it's been a huge component of us being connected and taking care of each other. My studio looks just like this city council, half are still masked, half are unmasked. And when we talk about going out in the public to socialize, half want to go inside and half do not. And so this social district is a really big piece of us being able to come together and socialize in a way that feels good, in a way that feels comfortable, and to be able to go from Alley 26 to the top of the rooftop to King Fisher and just enjoy some good time together. It's very important, and it would really be a great benefit to our community. And so I just want to say that we fully support the social district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here, Ms. LeBlanc. Followed by Sean Umstead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Please excuse me if my voice cracks. I'm an official soccer mom, so if anybody can relate. My name is Nish LeBlanc. I am the founder and owner of Lennox and Gray and Lennox and Gray Construction. Just wanted to lend my support and offer it from the perspective of a real estate investor and as a landlord. I'm the proud owner of three properties in the historic district of downtown, with two of my six tenants actually having retail component. As you know, this is going to offer a great opportunity for us to be able to continue recruiting great talent, you know, into our market. And so wanted to, once again, just re-extend this, this as an opportunity for me to be able to showcase what Durham is about, what's missing, how can we get more of our underrepresented businesses to be able to participate in opportunities such as this. We all know, of course, about the seasonality of some of these businesses, and so being able to offer an additional stream of revenue, I think, is going to be great. So thank you all for your time, and please consider.
Ms. Umstead? That'll be followed by Ms. Davis, Emily Davis at 417 Foster Street. Having a little difficulty understanding the handwriting, but you'll be next.
Hi, I'm Sean Umstead, owner, co-owner of King Fisher, Queenies, and Queen Burger. Thank you for letting me have some time, council members, mayor. Thank you for letting me have some time, council members, mayor. I just wanted to kind of piggyback off what everyone else has said. I have opened businesses prior to COVID, three years ago. I opened one at the peak of Omicron, and I opened one two weeks ago, which is, according to the president, like post-COVID. And I have experienced what that felt like in all the different instances. I think the main thing I'd like to emphasize is that there was a real momentum amongst Durham, especially in the food and beverage front, but an energy that you could feel and a momentum you could feel in late 2019 and early 2020 that I just don't feel currently. I think in large part that has to do with the way people gather, comfortability people have with it, and whatever kind of return to the office things have and haven't happened. But there simply isn't the positive momentum that downtown Durham did have prior. I think the social district is not a cure for that, though I do think it is definitely a big step in the right direction. I think, at the very least, not falling behind other municipalities in terms of how they attract the residents of all, especially all the suburbs that are here between Raleigh and Durham and Chapel Hill. I think it's almost a necessity to compete when we're trying to have folks from, from around the area come and visit, especially on the weekends. I think from a bar owner's perspective, I already have people that come to King Fisher or Queenies for a drink or two, go to Alley Twenty-Six, go to 106 Main, frequent bars across the city. So I already see this sort of movement. I think facilitating that, making it easier, is a necessity and a great, a great idea. I also think for a city that I don't, this is anecdotal, but I don't see the same sort of movement and people just out and about downtown, especially weeknights. I think more energy outside is, is honestly a real positive for downtown Durham's safety. The more people that are out and about enjoying themselves in kind of a positive spirit, I think, can only go in a good direction for our city. That's most of what I have to say. So I'm Sean Umstead, and I'm in support of social districts. Thanks.
I think it's Ms. Cici's. All right, followed by Mr. Damian Moore.
Good afternoon. My name is Cecilia, and I'm Emily Davis. Thank you for having me. I am not prepared, and I'm a little nervous. So I'm the owner of Cici's Gallery. I just don't have a lot to say, but I want to mostly like a comment. You know, pandemic gives us a lot of things, is good things and bad things. And some of the things that I realize is that one of the good things is, a lot of people realize the most important thing is the now, what we have now. And it's not so much material stuff. We lose people, we gain people, but, and then some, some things is more like minimize things. And I've, I think is the laughter, the joy. A lot of people were hungry for hugs and for contact with the, with the person, with the next neighbor and stuff like that. So for a while, we were not able to do that. But I think this will be a time to, to recreate that moment, to have a, a good relationship with downtown Durham, and also for our friends, to be free to enjoy the time, to, to have a drink and, you know, enjoy the time. So for that, I just wanted to let you know that I am here to support a hundred percent the social district. Please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Moore, followed by Mr. Creach, Ms. Susan Amy, Ms. Rashonda Mason, and Mr. Fasil Tesfaye. Yes. And those will be all the ones that I have here in person, and we do have a couple of other speakers online. How you doing?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager Page, City Members of the Council. Thank you. My name is Damian Moore. I own and operate Dame's Chicken and Waffles at Liberty Warehouse, 530 Foster Street, Suite 103. I have been a, I feel like I've been a resident of downtown because I've given my life in many ways to downtown and lived in downtown for many hours over the years. But I have operated my business in downtown Durham since 2010. Most recently, though, in most recent history, we've moved and relocated from our 317 location on West Main Street to where we are now at Foster Street. And it's been a bit of a challenge for us, not only because of the pandemic, but because just operating a new business and moving into new spaces prevents, presents certain challenges. However, prior to 2010, I was also in business in downtown Durham with a business known as Blue Mountain Catering. And I did that from 2004 to 2009 somewhat successfully. Downtown Durham was a very different place in the early 2000s, for those who may not be aware. Most folks didn't come to downtown unless they were coming to court or paying taxes or something of that nature, and it was pretty much a ghost town after five o'clock. With the influx of new business opportunities and new developments such as American Tobacco Warehouse, such as the D-PAC, and some of the residential developments that came along after that, you could start to see and feel the growing pains of downtown Durham. I would oftentimes approach my business in the morning and be faced with jackhammers in front of our entryway. We were oftentimes victim to utilities being shut off by the city so they could develop and do other things in our market, oftentimes with short notice. We indulged as best we could and tried to make light of those situations, but at the end of the day, it cost us significantly. It made us feel the pain of progress, as it were. So as I think now, and fast forward fifteen years later, and look at the opportunity that social districts presents to us, I do like, look at it as another form of progress for the city of Durham. My particular business does not sell a tremendous amount of alcohol. We sell just enough beer and wine to complement our food. But I do see the benefit of, and the draw that it brings for tourism, for residents of downtown and the like, and for just the general development of retail and commercial spaces in the downtown market. So for that reason, as well as others, I just want to say I extend my support to the social districts notion and referendum, and I look forward to seeing you at Dame's Chicken and Waffles someday. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Creach. Followed by Ms. Amy, Rashonda Mason, and I'm not going to slaughter your name anymore, Mr. Fasil.
Hi.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. I'm Chris Creach. My wife and I own and operate The Glass Jug Beer Lab. We have two locations, both in Durham. Originally in 2014, we opened in South Durham. Our, we opened a second location in downtown Durham in the early 2021, 545 Foster Street, right next to Durham Central Park, across from the food hall, next to Dame's. All of our neighbors are here. So I just wanted to say that I think having a social district is obviously going to have a great impact on our business, our employees, and our community as a whole. So I wanted to come to show my support for that. I think a lot of folks have mentioned COVID and the impacts of that. I think we should consider this on its own merits. I think, I don't think that we need a pandemic to encourage us to do this. I think this is the right thing for the city, and I think it's the right growth move for us, regardless of, of the pandemic and the, the pain that that has caused local businesses. I think, yes, this will, will help. But I think we should look at it for its own merits. We've seen that it's working across the country and across other cities in North Carolina. And we compete with those other cities for traffic. You know, there are people in Durham who will go out in Raleigh or Chapel Hill, people from Raleigh that choose to go elsewhere instead of Durham. The more that we can do to draw people here, give them a good reason to come, go out, hang out with friends, enjoy the city, I think this is a great step in that direction. You know, I, one of the big reasons I support this is, you know, with people starting to come back out, there are still obviously folks that are uncomfortable dining inside. This allows us to serve a drink, let people walk out into Durham Central Park, or go over to the gallery, to go explore the city and walk around, be outside, and not force them to sit inside to enjoy food or drink. And also, for us, our taproom being right adjacent to Durham Central Park, I think it's a great way to utilize the park at a time when it's normally somewhat dormant. Weeknight evenings, when there's not as much going on in the park, now you can get a drink from us or from the food hall, pick up some food at Dame's, take it out into the park, have a picnic, have a glass of wine while your kids play on Mount Mitchell. It enables the community to get together, to be outside, and use the resources that already exist in a new way. And, you know, for me, as I sit here mentioning all the other businesses, I think the cross-promotion aspect of this, getting people out and walking and moving and not just sitting and being stationary, but bouncing across other businesses, I think there's only good things can come of that. So I think that's, that's all I have. So I hope that you all will consider this, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you so much for being here. Ms. Amy?
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, council members and staff. My name is Susan Amy. I'm the president and CEO of Discover Durham. We're at 212 West Main Street. And I would also like to speak on behalf of social districts. Durham's reputation as the hippest city in North Carolina and the South's foodiest town has put it on the map for many who didn't know anything about Durham before. Our reputation has attracted new residents, new visitors, and businesses from across the triangle of the state and nationally. That popularity has helped launch and sustain businesses, events, and an economy that adds value to all of our lives. Our downtown businesses also support hundreds of jobs, many of which have low barriers to entry for our residents. So how did we get this reputation? From the small businesses, entertainment venues, and event planners. Many of the people who are in this room, who contribute so much personality and life to downtown Durham. It's a virtuous circle that's taken us from this Durham that has been mentioned several times this afternoon of fifteen years ago, to where we were right before the pandemic and to where we're striving to get back to today. So not only is it important and just to do whatever we can to support the businesses that have done so much for our community, it's in everyone's best interest to contribute to the ongoing vibrancy of downtown. And I can say, as the operators of the Visitor Info Center for Durham, we're also excited to participate in the social district and welcome visitors into our space as part of that initiative. And we'll be pleased to be a physical space where residents and visitors can stop to ask questions about the social district and help in our partnership with DDI. So downtown doesn't have nearly the traffic it did before the pandemic, particularly throughout the week. And the social district alone won't solve that, but is certainly a step in the right direction. It certainly seems like something North Carolina's hippest city would support, and Discover Durham supports it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. Ms. Mason?
Hello, everyone. Mayor O'Neill, Council. I believe I am probably the baby business on the street. I am a little bit over a year old. I am Rashonda Mason. I own the slush at 321 West Main Street. We are alcoholic-infused slushy, also non-alcoholic, so we have a very unique business model that allows for people to bring their kids and have like a family fun environment, as well as parents get to do their thing while the kids do their thing. So inside of our building, they are already able to utilize kind of this unique model that they have. But ever since I've opened, the number one question that I constantly get is, am I able to take them to go? I get probably dozens of emails, DM messages, phone calls, and they are all specifically for to-go options. And our product is colorful, unique candy tops. So it's very popular with probably larger cities like Miami and Houston and places where you are actually able to just kind of walk around with them and use them as a fun product. I don't think people really view them as alcohol intake as much as they do for most other establishments, but they are, that's our number one request. And I feel like, being from the city of Durham and now owning a business in downtown Durham on Main Street, it's a prideful moment for me when I have people that come from other cities. And I've had people from Carrboro, Raleigh, Charlotte, Greensboro. And for me, we would always have to, as I spoke about, go out to other places to kind of be able to hang out or feel like we were engaging in, in a nightlife or out and, out and about city. But now, we have become that place because I'm happy to provide a product that people actually come to the city to utilize. And I think if they were able to come in and take our beverages, to actually be able to walk around with them and be able to utilize and go around and, and purchase from other businesses and visit art galleries and utilize other services like self-help building, things that are in the city that are within close proximity with the social districts, I think that would help be a great initiative to allow people to kind of come to the city and get the fun feel that they get from utilizing our products. So I am, and two enthusiastic thumbs up for social districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. All right. I'm not going to try to pronounce it again.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
I'll let you pronounce.
Yes, Mayor, you have pronounced mine properly.
Maybe the last in-person speaker.
Fasil Tesfaye. Yes, you have pronounced mine correctly. Thank you. My name is Fasil Tesfaye. I'm owner of Gurshadurab and Gojo. We've been in business five years now in downtown Durham. I'm in favor of a social district because we still have not recovered fully from the pandemic. We still have not opened for lunch on the weekdays. We don't have as many businesses open around us where lunch crowd is not as, as it was before. So anything that will help us to recover or fully operational, it'd be a great source of income for all of us. And then at the same time, we will have, you know, people who will be enjoying the downtown as they should. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I believe that will conclude our in-chamber speakers today. We do, I believe, have one additional person via the internet, Ms. Coria, Ms. Diane Coria. Ms. Amy was listed as being on the internet, and Ms. LeBlanc, but they are both here. We would also ask anyone else who has joined us on the internet if you would raise your virtual hand, if you would like to speak to this item as well. And I believe that will be Ms. Wagstaff. So it will be Ms. Coria, followed by Ms. Wagstaff, are the two names that I see. And I see our clerk is nodding. Ms. Coria, if you're able to hear me, if you would, ma'am, you have the floor. I believe you're still muted, Ms. Coria, Ms. Diane Coria. Now you're, now you should be able to, to speak.
Madam Mayor, I believe we're having issues with the audio from Zoom.
With our audio? Let's see if, if we would have that same issue. Ms. Wagstaff, can you try to speak, ma'am? We're still having audio issues. All right, we'll come back to those two speakers and allow for the present, the formal presentation to come forth at this time. Mr. Walcott.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
To your hands, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Madam Manager. I'm Wade Walcott with the Parks and Recreation Department. Going to go over this presentation with regard to social districts, the outline of which will be the why and what of a social district, what cities can do like Durham to enact this if they so choose, the must-haves of a social district, which pertains to the management plan, the, the certain things that have to happen for it to operate, the options that businesses have to participate or not participate. You also hear about a little bit more, not as much maybe of the local interest and how this came to Durham. And of course, the considerations staff have had throughout this process, investigating it, and looking at the values and standards and the, and the research that we've done so far. So the, the why, I think, has been wonderfully explained in terms of where this first originated through the state and passing legislature to help create a through the state and passing legislature to help create a spark for small businesses. Many times, it's been in downtown areas, but it's not limited to downtown. And cities are also not limited just to having one social district either. So, there's lots of opportunities. And what the social district is specifically is a defined outdoor space where people can responsibly enjoy an alcoholic beverage as well. To actually activate this, and this is what I believe is part of this agenda and you have as an attachment, is an ordinance to enact the social district. And within that ordinance, it talks about the management plan, which we'll go over today too, that has all the details of the dates and times. So, cities have the option to opt in or create the social So, part of the management plan includes things like our overall communication, the education that we'll have for community visitors and businesses. That is done through, and I'll go through this in detail, signs and stickers through our website. Part of the management plan will also include very clear, very specific boundaries, which is a map that shows where the social district is taking place and where it's not taking place, all the way to specific days and times that this would be enacted, to very specific guidelines about the cups that would be a part of this. So, on the screen here in the presentation, this is specifically pertaining to signs. I have some examples that I'll show you at the end of it. But on these signs, we'll show you exactly what areas are inbound, so to speak, for a social district, what are out of bounds. It's very important for us and everyone involved that it's clearly identifiable to anyone that's visiting or it's a resident of where this can happen and where this could not. On these signs, we'll have very clear days and hours the district is in effect. It's also a requirement to make sure that there's a telephone number of the ALE Division for the state and Durham Police. And makes it very clear that alcohol beverages purchased in the district can only be consumed within the district as well. In addition to those types of signs that are going in and out, there are signs for the businesses with regard to businesses interested in participating. No one's forced to participate or no one's excluded from participation. That's their choice. It's also, there's no fee-based or anything like that for any businesses to participate. There are several areas that are, about four areas here that you can see of options that someone can participate. And when we talk about businesses, there's a, I'll say, a separation between permittee and non-permittee. Permittee being an ABC permittee where they're already licensed to be able to sell alcohol versus a non-permittee that doesn't sell alcohol. So, as you can see, the option here is, if you are an ABC permittee who wants to participate in this program, you can do so. And you can also allow outside drinks, meaning a drink from one other establishment. They could leave that establishment, walk down the street into your establishment. So, that would be clear. Another opportunity for businesses, you could be an ABC permittee that's participating, but you're not going to allow outside drinks from other establishments to come into your establishment. Now, there are also opportunities for, and you heard from some of them tonight, non-ABC permittee businesses that would like to participate. They don't sell alcohol, but they welcome you and allow you to bring that drink from another establishment into their business. And of course, there's the option that regardless if you're an ABC permittee or not, and you want to participate, you have that option as well. To communicate that and to make that clear for businesses, residents and guests, there's proposed stickers that'll be in their front window, their front door, that indicate right away at what level of participation that business may or may not be in with this district. The specificity around cups, this again, this is a part of the state law, the legislation. You can see here on the presentation what their requirements are. Not made of glass, not more than 16 ounces. Very clearly, there's a very specific font point of 12-point font, certain phrases that need to be on there. This one specifically, "Drink responsibly, B21." On the cup also, each business that provides this drink and is participating, not only will have this branded cup that has all these state-required requirements, will also have likely a sticker that represents that particular business, so you know where that came from. Now, with this option, there also, to actually make this happen, we know through multiple programs and services that Durham provides or any city, oftentimes from capacity-wise, we can't provide every program service just with our employees. So, just like in Parks and Recreation, we have services and programs that we contract out and have third-party providers provide those services. There is an option for this through this program as well called a designee. So, cities can establish a third-party designee to help administer and manage the social district and create the management plan that I talked about with all those particulars. But this is something that the city would have pre-approval over. So, everything I've talked about, this is something that the city would approve first, and then the third-party designee would implement. One of the discussions we've had so far is, well, first, how this came to be, of course, locally. When this passed a couple of years ago, a lot of cities were starting to get interested in getting involved. And then here, of course, you've heard from many of them today, and there's probably more local businesses here in Durham interested in how we could enact that here. So, many of them went to our partner Downtown Durham, Inc., and talked to them about the interest of how can we get something started here. And so, Downtown Durham, Inc. or DDI went to the city and manager's office, talked to them about, what can we do? So, at that point, the manager's office charged the Parks and Recreation Department and the city attorney's office to work together and work with DDI to explore this opportunity, this program, the pros, the cons, the considerations that we'd have, and see how this might be able to work. And so, that's where we are today with this opportunity. During that time, staff have done research. I know DDI has done research. That research entails all the outreach that you see on the screen now. It also includes working with our peer cities, going there, having conversations, hey, what's worked well, what hasn't, what have you learned since you've enacted this already, so that we can learn from it. And I think that amount of time has been very valuable. I think a lot of people were so into this and the research, they even sacrificed time after hours ago, these cities, to fully participate in their social districts, just to see how exactly it went. So, we did a lot of work there. We also did some conversations with our faith-based leaders that are in the downtown area, residents and businesses, but also the state ALE officers too, to fully understand what enforcement looks like, how is it or is it different than what is currently going on as well. So, one of the things that is not up for an action item today, but obviously something we've been working on and considering, is from a capacity standpoint of having DDI be that potential third-party designee to do this. What we're contemplating right now and what we're working on are what those details are. And specifically, what is the scope? What is the scope that DDI would do and perform in terms of a designee and the management program? And what is the scope and of what the city's responsibilities would be as well? With, and with that, part of what we're considering in DDI's role would be is creating that uniform signage. I mentioned all the boundary signs. There would be a website also available to the public, the signs, the stickers that'd be outside the businesses. The other standards and considerations that we had, even from a staff perspective of, look, we understand the program, we understand the intent statewide. We also recognize what a great opportunity this is for, to help support small businesses. But we want to look on the other side as well and take our time with that. And some of the things that were important to us were the standards and values that we know the city of Durham has in terms of inclusion and equity, in terms of having a safe environment, a welcoming environment for everyone, the education, the communication that's going to be required, and of course, the cleanliness of this. So, we wanted to consider all those things and look at those. And I believe what we've got so far is answers to a lot of those questions of how we can make this a welcoming environment and a program. And we understand that it's not destined to just have to be in downtown. But as this opportunity creates itself, we learn from, as it goes, there could be opportunities elsewhere in Durham if there's interest for that. So, those are some of the things that we're looking at on those standards and values that I know the city of Durham has, and looking at proposed hours of operation for the district and days of the week. So, some of the next steps today, you have in front of you, an ordinance that actually is doing the creation of that. If the council so desires, we could come back in another cycle to talk more about selecting the designee that helps implement this program and looking at an agreement that it simply memorializes the scope of work of what that partner would do and what the city would do. These are just examples of what a draft sign would be at the border areas of a potential social district and what the proposed draft language would be on there as well. This is just a zoomed-in version of that, zoomed-in version of the boundaries. And these are what some temporary signs in our sister city in Raleigh have put up in some of those areas, just illustrating the points I made earlier about hours of operation and the maps as well. These are just examples of what Raleigh has done in terms of stickers that I mentioned about for individual businesses. I just got some hard copies today of renderings of what could be for Durham Downtown Social District. You know, homage to, like Councilmember Williams said earlier, homage to the Durham Bulls and their championship, branding this and labeling this the bullpen. An example of what a cup would potentially look like that meets the standards of the state law. Just another version of the sign I provided. And then a draft version of what those signs would be to indicate to residents, customers, visitors, other businesses, what level of participation that the business might be playing in. So, that is the presentation. What's before you is the ordinance to consider and also looking for feedback if, to come back in a future meeting to discuss if the council's interested in moving forward and selecting a third-party designee.
Thank you so much. I did want to try to see if we can return to those two speakers on the internet before we proceed with council discussion. That would be Ms. Coria and Ms. Wagstaff.
Wade, would you mind passing those examples up so we could get a closer look?
Sure.
Thanks.
Ms. Coria, I see that you have unmuted. Can you see if you're able to speak with us at this time? Okay. Ms. Coria? Ms. Coria, you're unmuted on our end. Madam Clerk, no response on your end.
Madam Mayor, they're still working on the technical side of the audio here in the chamber.
All right. If you all will stay on the line, we'll continue to work on those technical difficulties. And now, I will turn it over for a discussion amongst my colleagues. I'll look to my right first to see if you all have any discussion. Councilwoman Freeman, Councilwoman Cabeara, Mayor Protem, you all having discussion, thoughts, comments, and then I'll turn to my left.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, and I welcome all the feedback from all the small businesses. I recognize how difficult it has been for all of the businesses across the entire city, the county and the country, and just acknowledging that this pandemic has hit a lot of us hard. I have to reckon with, I think, just a little bit on how it comes across, I have to be honest, and that it would, it would, the district itself is problematic for me because it limits it to just downtown. And so, only downtown benefits from this again. And that's over and over again been an issue for folks who've been a business in our city. And I can appreciate, I think, one of the speakers said that the missing piece of, you know, in COVID was the kind of that care and that ability to network and socialize with, you know, your friends and families. And I think that that's overwhelmingly across the board. And so, that's a concern for me. I'm working through it, trying to figure that out. But I am, I wanted to hear just specifically from our staff on what it would look like for social districts, I guess, around convenience stores? I'm not sure if that's a possibility, but I do know that the question was raised around creating this inequity for certain types of businesses, especially if you end it at East Durham and down the block on a corner in my neighborhood, there's a group of folks who sit there with drinks. And if they don't have this cup, who exactly would be enforcing? Who would be involved in that conversation? Like, what happens for those folks who are outside of the social district?
In that, I guess, hypothetical case, I couldn't speak to what would happen to them. It would be the same thing that would happen today, right? If they weren't in the district, it's the same laws and ordinances apply as today. If they're outside of, right, it's not passed through ordinance right now. So, I couldn't say in terms of what level enforcement that police or ALE would, I don't think it would change. You know, I don't think it'd be increased at all. If we're looking at other areas, so we don't want to be exclusive, as I mentioned, the districts themselves can be anywhere. So, if there are groups of other businesses that are interested in developing a social district in that area, everyone has that opportunity. And we would be back here to talk about that specific area and that specific ordinance and how that could happen.
Are there other organized districts across the city that could, kind of like paid staff that's organized around, you know, making sure that the businesses have what they need?
I don't know that. And I don't know if they have to be even a formal, like 501(c)(3) organization to even do that. This could, there's a lot of different options that I don't think have to be that kind of a formal setting for this to happen.
And I just want to make sure, so the taxpayers would be responsible for creating the signage? This is coming out of the city's funds to create all the signage?
The expenses for the signs would be a city expense.
And then, I also had a question, I think if Mayor, if Senator Woodard could step forward, I had a question regarding HB 890 and its initial, I guess, I had a question about this prescriptive nature of the contracts that you were talking about and trying to understand. I didn't gather any of that from the presentation, so I'm assuming you know something.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did not hear your question, council member.
We mentioned the prescriptive nature of the contracts. There was a prescriptive nature of those contracts that you were suggesting be cautioned away from.
So, looking at the implementation of social districts in other cities, they have not contracted. It's just been an action of the city. And so, and again, I would like to hear more about it. I just reviewed the documents online. It just seemed that the contracts seem to be just, be a little burdensome for your third-party provider.
So, the...
And like I said, Greensboro's agreement was two pages, for instance.
You're talking about specifically the contract with like DDI?
Yeah. Well, whoever that third-party is.
Having a third party in place is what you're, okay. I thought you were saying.
I would hope you all would think about that and try to make that not as burdensome. It's like I said, we have, I think we're over, we may be close to 20 now. And I think Durham's would be the most prescriptive and burdensome for your third-party provider.
We could be the first at this.
Well, sometimes it's not good to be the first.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, and then I also, I'm not sure who to ask the question, but I'm thinking it's more on the county side as far as, like, how do you navigate kind of that kind of fine line between folks who, folks who are trying to stay dry, so to speak, in these areas and how that looks? Like, I'm, I'm not sure if that's, I can't put it together right now, but it's in my mind, so I'll come back to it. But that's all I have for right now. But that's all I have for right now. But yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Walcott, from my right?
Councilperson Freeman, I was talking with Nicole with DDI, and she had some information about convenience stores specifically. And I'll try to relay, but if I fumble this up. But I believe with ABC permities, like a convenience store like that, they don't have the license of the permittee to be able to open the container at a convenience store. Whereas like a bar or restaurant, you can buy and open there. So that would be one difference with that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think that's specifically my issue and/or my question in trying to figure out how to avoid the open container, you know, pervasiveness in areas that don't have that.
Yeah, any convenience stores that are located in the social district would not be able to do that.
Councilwoman Caballero?
Yes, thank you. It's a great presentation. All the folks who've come out in support, in general, I am supportive of the social district idea. A couple of things that I know I'm really interested in is expanding transit. I don't actually, you know, people are going to imbibe. And I think we need to have a pretty robust conversation. And I said this to Nicole when she reached out. I think that the connectivity to transit, ensuring that we have better free transit is going to be really important to me. That doesn't mean I won't support it, but I think that there needs to be a conversation that then follows this. And that's on the city, but it's something I'm keenly interested in. And I'm also very keenly interested in making it a car-free zone at least parts of the time. If we're really going to actually get community out, if that's one of the major intentions, then we don't need cars downtown. And so some folks have mentioned the farmer's market. Guess what? The street's blocked a lot of times for the farmer's market. That's why it's packed, because you can walk around, you can be with your family, and you don't have to deal with cars. And so as a council member, those are the things that I hope that this conversation actually does, is it's not just about the small businesses, it's about Durham. And so that it forces a conversation on how do we actually make our city truly a place that's open for everyone downtown? It's great, you can go get a drink, but you actually can just be downtown in a car-free area. And a perk is you can go from one place to the other with your drink. But that is just one of the perks of being downtown. And I know we had great success with the streetery. I think small businesses were very, very keen on that. And so that's going to be my other ask of staff. Again, I'm not trying to say, oh, if we don't have these pieces, you know, ready to go, then no social district. But I think that there has to be kind of a continuation of that conversation and how do we move forward as a city around that.
If I could address the streetery. Nicole Thompson, Downtown Durham Incorporated. Sorry, I forgot where I worked for a moment. President and CEO of Downtown Durham Incorporated. Sorry, it's just one of those days. Yes, we did have the streeteries. We worked very closely with any and all of the businesses in the audience and many that are not in the audience about that. That program is driven very much by the ability to support them as we pivot to whatever the downtown looks like as we come out of COVID. We are having conversations now about what that will look like in 2023. I don't think, given other things that we have on our plate, this being the big thing, that we'll be doing anything in 2023. I mean, 2022, I'm also forgetting what year it is. But we are looking at that and we will let that be driven very much when we initially did it in 2020 by how we can support the businesses as they open back up, as they become fully operational. But I do want to note that that is not something that has gone away. And we have heard that from many people. The social district in other communities is working without closing roads. So we are not leading with the need to close roads, but we too have heard the conversation around downtown being car-free. But we also recognize that there are a lot of burdens placed on individuals who rely on delivery of merchandise and other things of that nature. So it's a much larger conversation. It is one that I have just started with Sean Egan with the Transportation Department a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. And Directors Egan, Egan has heard from me about this issue loudly. Thank you.
Mia Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wade, thank you so much for much anticipated presentation, not only by this council, but I know the residents and citizens of this city. Couple of disclosures first that I think I should make. Firstly, I'm a member of the Board of DDI, so I'm going to put that out there. I'm also the second Vice President of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, which actually lent its weight to the passage of this legislation. Interestingly enough, Durham being one of the larger cities in North Carolina, some of our constituents in the league, smaller cities, actually were looking for ways to catch up with the bigger cities. It was actually them that gave fuel to this legislation and really backed it so they could revitalize their downtowns after COVID and get more economic activity. It seems to me that we're Durham. So Durham is kind of looked to do sometimes what I think with other cities and other municipalities might view as irreconcilable. As an elected official, I consider myself a brand ambassador of the city. I very much want us to lead in every area. I want us to continue to be the economic driver of this region. I want us to be the envy of other cities, respectfully, in our state. I want us to continue to be a destination where folk come for culture and to play as well. But I also, you know, want us to continue to be a beacon of equity and inclusion. And sometimes it's hard to strike a balance between both. But I do not see a social district at odds with our achieving those goals. I think we have to do them both. I think we have to work on them both. Social districts are not new. They've been a tool of cities around the country for many years. And this will not approach Bourbon Street in New Orleans or Broadway in Nashville. We're not talking that level of intensity. But I think it has been a useful tool for cities to maintain economic vitality while not doing damage to our vigilance on for things of equity. I got to be honest, you know, when I talk to people in other neighborhoods around our city, and this is anecdotal, when, you know, when I ask what's going on in the neighborhoods and what the problems are, I haven't heard one person say, you know, we need to be able to walk around with drinks. They say they need their sidewalks fixed and gunfire addressed in those neighborhoods. You know, this does us... And we can put social districts now. If we want to talk about Fayetteville Street and maybe Hayti, but I think, you know, cities have different flavors in different areas. There are some areas where people come to visit cities that are sacred to make pilgrimage, to give homage to their history. And there are other areas where people come to drink and cut up. And there are cities that have both of them. So I, you know, in some of our legacy neighborhoods and areas in our city, I wonder if this would even fit with that branding of what we're trying to capture in that particular neighborhood. They should certainly have the option to do it. But, you know, we come to Hayti. I think folk want to come to Hayti to reflect on the majesty of our past, our economic achievements, more so than walk down Fayetteville Street with drinks in their hand. And again, as I've said, when, you know, when I talk to folk about what they want, I haven't heard envy about not being able to walk around with drinks. It's been much more, you know, visceral things. I want my kids safe from gunfire. I want the schools better. You know, I want the sidewalks better so we can walk down the street before we even get to what we're carrying in our hands. So I think that it's important that we keep vigilance and continue to do the work. You know, I don't see social districts and our work for equity at odds, just like I don't see unarmed mental health responders and ShotSpotter at odds with one another. I think we have to learn to do both and as a city. So many of our, you know, sister municipalities look to Durham as a leader in multiple areas. They wonder how we can be this place that's so into fighting for equity and inclusion and yet still be the economic force that we are. It's just a special sauce in our city. I resonate with the shopkeepers and business owners downtown. We've seen an array of different races and folk represented and our business owners downtown. So I think we've got to figure out a way to do this and to continue our vigilance and our fight for equity and inclusion. There will be different agendas in different neighborhoods, and I think we've got to be agile and responsive enough to do more than one thing at one time. I do want to ask, and maybe you can just make a note of this, Wade, to our city attorney's office. I would like some understanding as to what the rationale is, what the concerns are of our legal gatekeepers with respect to the contract. I have had opportunities to look at other cities' contracts and agreements. DDI is pretty much a creature of us and a creature of our city. They're folk we know, they're folk we've worked with for years. So if there are some unforeseen or unknown pitfalls to us as laypeople that our city attorney and our legal folk are concerned about, I'd like some, in the future, some explanation as to why our contract does indeed seem a bit more robust than other cities. And, you know, they do a great job of protecting us, so I'm sure there's a rationale for it. But I'd like to hear that. And that's where I am. Thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to moving this forward.
I look to my left. You're welcome. I would also ask if you all... We did have a scheduled presentation to start at 3 o'clock on the wheels. So if you all could just be very brief so that we can finish this so that we won't have to come back to it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very in support of this program. I think it sounds great. Don't see a lot of downsides, honestly. It seems like a pretty easy intervention on the part of the city to help bring some folks back to downtown. And having more people drinking downtown doesn't necessarily mean people drinking more downtown. Like, if I go, I'm going to get my standard leg drink or two, and then I'm going to go home and I'm just going to be outside with my drink instead of inside. And I suspect that the vast majority of our neighbors, that this will not, that it will not lead to excessive drinking. It will just lead to a more pleasant environment in which to go get a drink at a bar or a restaurant. So I don't have any concerns about the program at all. I look forward to supporting it. My primary concerns are around enforcement. And as we're out of time, maybe we could reschedule a conversation with the police department. I'm interested in issues around how we currently enforce open container laws around the city. And I think this might be an opportunity for us to rethink how we enforce open container laws more broadly in the same model as we did a few years ago with misdemeanor marijuana enforcement, that an open container violation does not need to be the priority of the Durham Police Department. And is there a way that we can codify that these things are low-level priorities the same way we've codified that marijuana possession is a low-level priority to try to eliminate any potentially disparate and inequitable effects from folks who might be drinking outside in other parts of the city, not in this social district, getting very different responses from the city as a result? So I'd like to put that on our list of things to discuss and get some data from the police department about how they currently treat open container violations, how big an issue is it, how are those folks normally handled, just so that we can communicate to folks in the community that we are trying to make this as fair as possible, that we don't consider walking around with an open container to be a serious crime that requires, like, a police intervention the vast majority of the time. And so while, you know, so that it doesn't feel like we're, you know, kind of creating two Durums, this area of downtown where everyone can walk around and drink freely, but if, you know, if you're poor and you're black and you're in East Durham and you've got an open container, well, now the police are going to come for you. So that's my only concern. It's not directly related to the implementation of this policy. I fully support the implementation of this policy. And I'd like to use it as a jumping board to have a little bit more conversation about some of the other policies and enforcement actions that we're having now in the city. So let's just reschedule that for a future work session if we can. Madam Manager, thank you.
Thank you so much, Council.
I'm going to be quick. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's answered a lot of my questions that I had about the program. I do want to say that I would love to see Durham downtown become more vibrant. I would also love to see downtown Durham be a place where we have more conventions. I'm tired of going to places other conventions. I'm going to be coming to a convention here in Durham or conventions and, you know, bringing more people here to Durham. So I am also in favor of this. But I do have one question about, I'm concerned about you being, like, in terms of the safety. So let's, I mean, of course, we're going to have people drink the right way, right? But what happens if you have people that are coming into the establishments and they get kind of overly drunk? You know, like, I'm concerned about the safety for them also. So maybe we can talk about that in a later date. But in terms of people becoming too intoxicated, which we know we're not going to do in Durham, but let's say that happens in terms of going from place to place and then, you know, just for their safety also, which we're not going to have in Durham. I'm just saying, I'm concerned about. That's the only issue that I have in terms of the safety for also our businesses. You know what I mean?
From at least briefly, our peer cities that have implemented this already, they have not seen an uptick or an increase in that kind of behavior at all. So by allowing this to happen outside, it hasn't increased the amount or quantity or however you want to describe it, and they haven't had those issues. And all the same laws and requirements will still exist. And the bartenders and establishments still have those requirements to not overserve and to manage that problem.
Thank you. That was, because I really think that we do need to bring that vibrant back to Durham. I was downtown the other day and I'm like, my goodness. I had to come back to South Point to have my... I'm not going to say what I had, but I had to come to South Point to have my dinner and to kind of rewind from work. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
Thank you. One of the most exciting meetings I've had in a long time. For disclosure, I will have a restaurant downtown that will be in the district. And also, I am too on the Board of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. They advocated for this bill well before my time. But you don't run for office to stop your livelihood. So keep the business going. Thank you all for showing up today. Thank you to my colleagues. I'm going to be very direct. I really hope that everybody on this council supports this because the more revenue that businesses make, the more revenue that we make as a city. And that is just a direct correlation to having a strong local economy. And many of the beholders of that local economy in partnership with our community members as customers are sitting in this room right now and including the ones that are not. I am obviously a very strong proponent of this, but more so because it's part of the culture of the Bull City that I hope to define, that's vibrant, that's active, that, you know, has folks out and about. I hope we can bring the streetery back. I hope that we could do it in a very sensible way that, you know, just get downtown pumping again. We do have to look at things a little differently because businesses are not, more corporate businesses are not necessarily back in the office, and we relied so heavily on that. So we're in a place now where we have to define how does a city, especially in this inner core where we have now functioned strong economically without relying on businesses with folks that are sitting in their office and coming out for just lunch. So we have to define what that looks like. So we also have to keep in mind that the ABC laws are still in place and that we aren't creating anything different. You know, we're just allowing folks to mobilize a little bit more in downtown within a controlled district. So I'm really appreciative of the comments that I've heard. And I am ready to support this. And I thank you for your comment about the convention center. I think we all knew I want a real convention center in Durham so we can bring in an additional $30 million to $40 million a year in revenue, hopefully. And yeah, this is just part of the overall culture. I really appreciate the comments I've heard and I'm ready to support. Thank you.
Thank you all. I too will be supporting this initiative when it comes before us. I think it will come at the next meeting, city council meeting. I would share the concerns. Those have been my concerns that Councilwoman Johnson raised. I think the chief may be able to answer some of those concerns today, chief, if you can, that would be helpful.
With your permission, may I respond from here?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem, my city council, my community, thank you for the opportunity to come before you and answer some of your questions. So on the, with the question about enforcement, and certainly we can provide some data that shows how much enforcement we are actually doing around open containers and certain alcohol violations. And if I'm just being very deliberate with my words, our priority is violent crime, is violent crime in this city. I will tell you that my officers do not approach people with open containers and enforce. There has to be some sort of event that occurs that would spark... There has to be some sort of event that occurs that would spark a 911 call, so, for example, a disturbance, and the person that's involved in the disturbance is intoxicated. And most of the time, the response is, you know, you're gonna have to move along, or do we need to find a ride for you, or you have to leave the establishment, rather than citing for any kind of open container violations. So hopefully that can answer the question, and happy to provide some data at a later date.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other comments or discussions for this item?
Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the clerk if the folks who are on the call were, would be allowed, because I know there were just two, and I didn't wanna...
We have a response for that as well, so. Been kinda busy up here this afternoon.
I think I do have the response, and staff will correct me if I don't have, have it right, but it seems like we do have a hardware technology issue this afternoon, and the clerk has requested that the two individuals that have signed up to speak on this item please present their comments written. And I am hearing that this item will be on the consent agenda, so it would be an opportunity for those comments to come between this work session and council meeting.
Thompson, you have someone on the line?
We were able to contact Diane Courier. She is the owner of Honey Girl Meadery, and she said it was okay for us to read her response, if that would be okay?
Yes.
Okay. Diane Courier, owner of Honey Girl Meadery, located at 105 Hood Street, Unit Number Six. I wanted to echo that I believe the social district is a natural fit for Durham and something that reinforces our reputation as a vibrant food and beverage-centered city. Honey Girl Meadery is located at 105 Hood Street, Unit Number Six, and we have been in operation since 2014. We primarily would look forward to the cross-pollination support for our East Durham social district businesses and neighbors, and seeing people walking from location to location helps bring back some of Durham's vibrancy. Honey Girl Meadery is a, is a meadery as the name states, female-owned, 100% female-owned. Thanks.
Thank you so much. We're trying to see if someone would have a number from Ms. Wagstaff, to see if we could get her comments, and then I think we can conclude. Are there any other...
Madam Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
While, while we're waiting to see if we can get those comments, I would ask that, Madam Manager, Madam Mayor, that it be placed on GBA, because I would like to give the city attorney's office opportunity to respond to the query about the nature of the contract, if that's all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Freeman.
I just sent a message to see if she could send it, and, but that's all.
I believe that would conclude our formal presentation this afternoon. We thank you all for being here, and we look forward to a week from Monday. And we will now move to the, to the 3 o'clock presentation, which is the Wheels presentation. Please allow me to bump them up, even though we're running a little late with them. We will then come back to our other items, so that will be Item 26 that we will go to, and we have two speakers for that. I'm gonna ask you all to hold off for a little break. I know we're neat one, but they have some consultants that are waiting as a part of this presentation, okay? And if you can get Ms. Wagstaff, we can try to hear back from her at some point.
You're gonna hear the speakers first?
Yes, we have two, well, we may not be able to hear those speakers, because they're online. One at least would be online. Ms. Gideon Bueno, she's here, ma'am. We will hear from first for three minutes.
I'm getting your straight.
And Ms. Sprateley, is Ms. Sprateley, I think Ms. Sprateley was on the internet, so she may have those same difficulties of speaking. Ma'am, if you would come for your three minutes, and then we'll have the presentation.
My name is Gideon Bueno. Kind of excited to be here four months later after the last Durham City Council meeting. I'm really excited to see the progress that's been made in this project, too. I think it's gonna be really wonderful once everything has been put together. It's my understanding that there's been an assessment for wheels to be open, right? And I think, like, the number is a million dollars is what it's gonna take in order to get this building up to ADA compliant. It's also encouraging to have heard everybody talk about community and how COVID has impacted our ability to come together in community, right? So in my mind, I see a million dollars as a really, kinda cheap investment to build community in a way, you know, that is not necessarily centered around alcohol. But yeah, I, I guess I just wanted to share that it seems like there are certain commitments that are being made to this space, which I'm very excited about, and I hope to see that progress continue to be made. Yeah. I don't know what else to say, other than thank you so much for your continued partnership with the community and hearing us, especially as we're making progress in, like, starting a new residents committee, committee for wheels as well. And, yeah, it'd be wonderful to make this investment and hopefully get this space open a little bit quicker, so that, you know, the city can also make revenue through, through wheels as a destination spot, because I can only imagine how long it's gonna take in order to get the splash zone open. I think one thing I also wanna say is, about community, accessibility and affordability, right? Wheels can be a spot where different types of folks can, can skate and have fun in a way that is financially affordable. So, yeah, again, I feel like I'm just saying the same things over and over again, but if it's, if it's a question of, like, a million dollars in, like, community support, I think that's, that's money well spent. So, thank you so much for your time. I greatly appreciate it, and I look forward to continued progress on this project. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today and for your comments. We now turn to our formal presentation.
Good afternoon, excuse me, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and members of city council. Apologies by my voice. Let's see if I can make it stop. My name is Shawna Parker with the General Services Department, and I'm here to present the Wheels Skating Rink Assessment and Opinion of Probable Cost. The presentation is going to include a, this is my first time to present, so I apologize, the code analysis, assessment, overview, and findings that were put together by a team of, the design team, Ratio. We're gonna review the deficiency categories that were identified as part of the assessment, the preliminary project timeline, and then gonna review the cost model and a probable opinion of cost by deficiency category. The Ratio team is currently working on concepts for the aquatics facility at the former Wheels site, and they were engaged to perform a thorough investigation, a review of the former Wheels skating center, to analyze all of the building systems for code and ADA deficiencies, including the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, as well as the structure, with a focus on access and egress. The assessment scope emphasized the identification of code, life safety, and accessibility deficiencies that would limit operations as a public recreation center, and it did not include identification of deferred maintenance or interior upgrades, although some items related to maintenance were included in the assessment findings, and we'll kind of go over that in, in this Once we received the code analysis report, the associated cost model, they were broken down into four deficiency categories for consideration and for review and just decision-making. Priority 1.1 was identified as ADA accessibility items. Priority number 1.2 was code, life safety, and risk mitigation. Priority number two includes maintenance items, and priority three includes operations items, which is basically kitchen upgrades for the concessions piece of the facility. Items number 1.1 and 1.2, those were the focus of the assessment, and those include the items that would need to be corrected prior to opening the facility for public use. And then priorities two and three, they're more, not required items, but they were included in the assessment as things that should be considered for just kind of the operations of the facility, and we'll go through some of the specific items here in just a minute. So some of the deficiencies that were included in the report that were identified as ADA deficiencies include non-compliant door clearances, non-compliant door and plumbing hardware, non-compliant counter heights at various locations throughout the facility, non-compliant accessible parking, and there's currently not an accessible path to the skating rink. There's kind of a raised area around the perimeter. So modification would be, need, need to be made to provide the universal access to the skating rink itself. And all of these deficiencies are a result of requirements from the Americans with Disability Act, which is the national code to provide universal access to facilities. And priority number 1.2 includes items in the report that focused on code, life safety, and risk mitigation issues, and some of the items included in the report in this category include non-compliant egress pathways and means of egress. So the emergency exits require certain pathways from the emergency exits, and the doors themselves have to be, meet certain requirements, so there are some modifications that need to be made to meet that requirement. Insufficient fire alarm notification on the fire alarm system, and then some of the plumbing issues that were called out in the report include the lack of a domestic backflow preventer on the domestic water line, excuse me, and potential replacement of the water heaters to allow for hot water in the building. So the items included, or some of the items included in the priority number two for maintenance, the deficiencies included three HVAC units that are at the end of their service life. There are five units on the building itself. One of them covers the area for the kitchen and the office areas, and then four of the units serve the skating rink itself, and three of those units are at the end of their life, two of them have been replaced relatively recently. Light switch and receptacle replacement throughout the facility, and then installation of pipe insulation and servicing electrical equipment were all recommendations in the report that fell under this maintenance category. Priority number three includes operations, and this is basically kitchen upgrades. There's a concession area in the facility that would require general cleaning and some updates to that portion of the building. Oh, I'm so sorry. So specific equipment, kitchen design would depend on a concessionaire or operator that would be hired by the, by the, by the city, but there is a line item in the, the report and the assessment cost estimate that includes basic upgrades to that kitchen. So a preliminary project timeline has been developed that is based on the standard kind of project delivery from, from design through construction, and I'm gonna go through kind of some of the highlights of what would be required to go through the process for design and construction on this type of project. The General Services Department would issue a request for qualifications to select a design team to put together construction documents. That would take one month. Once we receive statements of qualifications, there's an internal process that takes place for review and contract negotiation. We are showing a week in the, or this preliminary timeline, that's typically several weeks, but we've reduced that to a week in attempts to kind of compress the timeline. City council approval process takes one month, and then once approved, the design contract would be signed through on base, and that takes one week. Construction drawings and specifications, we've allowed four months in the schedule, and typically this would be about a six-month timeframe to produce those construction drawings, but we've compressed that timeline. And then site plan and inspections review, we've allowed two months in the schedule. And again, typically that's a four-to-six-month process, but we're hoping to have concurrent review and some expedited reviews to allow for that to be shortened. Once we have approval for the construction drawings, we'd go out for a public bid for construction, and we typically would allow a month for that bid process, and then we'd go through a similar internal process for the equitable business opportunity compliance review, and then drafting the contract for one week. I'm sorry. I keep forgetting to do that. And then the city council approval process of one month, with an on-base approval of the construction contract for one week. And then we had, would advertise this particular project with a four-month construction duration for a total duration from issuing a request for qualifications through construction of 15 months. And again, typically for a standard project that we would complete, it would be an 18 to 24-month process, but we've compressed things where possible in the schedule to allow for a shorter timeframe. And then based on the kind of compressed timeframe that we're showing, that we've put together, we've come up with the opinion of probable cost, which is based on the cost model provided as part of the assessment. The cost model includes the construction costs for each of the deficiencies that were identified in the report, and then we have identified those deficiencies and placed them into those different deficiency categories that we reviewed. And then to come, or to, to result in the budgetary estimate, we need to apply the design fees to the construction cost, and typically we would estimate 10 to 15% design fees for this type of project, but because of the compressed schedule for budgeting purposes, we've included a 20% design fee. So the deficiency categories for ADA accessibility, the estimated fee or the estimated cost for that category is $284,000. The deficiencies included in the code, life, safety, and risk category are estimated at $481,000. So those two line items, those two categories that would be required to open the facility, total $765,000 for those deficiencies included in the report. And then the additional maintenance items that were included, as well as the operations for the kitchen upgrades, those totaled just over a million dollars for this estimate. The maintenance portion is about $918,000, with $85,000 for the kitchen upgrades. So that concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. I do want to ask a question in terms of, for my clarification and others as well. This proposal basically gets the building ready for use. There will be a separate proposal to get it ready to operate as a skating rink. Those would be two dis- Those would be two distinct kind of items. Is that, would that be correct?
Well, this would be, this would get the facility ready to operate. But I think there would be a separate.
Good afternoon, Henry Prosperity, General Services. This assessment would get the facility ready to open for a skating rink. There could be a secondary contract for an operator for food concessions. But if we did all the work that we included today and presented today, we would be having it open for skating.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not surprisingly, I think you anticipated the most important question in this. I was, thank you. Good afternoon for the presentation, by the way. Great work. Yeah, I think you anticipated, because I, that was exactly what I was thinking. This would get the building ready. But, you know, cities don't really run skating rinks. We would need to bring in, I would assume we'd need to bring in some outside vendor or somebody to actually run it for us. And I think that goes to the mayor's question that this part just gets the building ready. So there, I guess there'd need to be a concurrent process. We don't want the building ready and fresh and new and sitting unused for a long time because we hadn't started the process to get somebody to run it for us. But I guess my, what I want to say is firstly, this is exciting. This is an iconic place for people in Durham. And I guess fate has smiled on this council that, you know, we get to say that we were the council if we move forward to bring skating back. My question is, or my concern, or my, I guess my thoughts now are from a managerial and timing point of view. Is this something that rises to the level of action out of the budget, normal budgetary cycle? I know these numbers are based upon, I assume, if we started the clock now. Is this something that we, as a council, I'm talking to my colleagues and talking out loud, do we want, is this something we should integrate into the next budget cycle and put the money in it for there? Or is this something that we think rises to the level of out-of-sequence action or out-of-cycle action? Like, we got to get this done now. And if we do it now, keeping in mind that when the building is ready, we're not going to, you know, nobody from our 2,600 employees is going to be opening and running a skating rink. We need to find a vendor as well. And I'm wondering also, do we need to place this in context of the strategic use for that entire property? What does this mean? How does this bode for our aquatic center plans as well? If we're going to have skating there? So we've made the commitment. That iconic place will be preserved. I think it's safe to say we're all excited about that. But do we now need to take some time to see what an integrated plan with skating and swimming and whatever else we're going to put there looks like? Give our staff time to do that? Do we need to just, you know, come out the gate right now and get the clock started on this? Should it be part of our next budget cycle? You know, give ourselves time to work it out and kind of integrate it with the full plan for that area, knowing that skating's coming, but it's also going to be part of a master plan for that area as well? So I guess those are some of my questions and concerns. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
City Manager Page?
Thank you for the recognition. The reason you see us here today is because of the request that the council made for us to go and do exactly what you see staff presenting here. The reason this is not an action item is because we need further direction on next steps. And I will cut my comment short. But I did want to, you know, make sure that is for the record. We are providing what you asked us to bring back. And we are listening for the next steps that you want us to take.
Thank you, Madam Manager. My comments were precisely for my colleagues. I was talking to kind of us about moving forward now that we've got this, you know, some real numbers in front of us. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanda, do you have a sense of if we were to move forward with this plan to get Wheels back online and an out-of-budget cycle process? So like, say, okay, we want to start this now? Whether the resources to do that exist, where they could come from, and if there would be any opportunity costs on other things if we were to move that forward?
So I am going to speak to that in the context of the project, the overall project. The overall project on the Wheel site is part of our capital improvement program, which is multi-year. We do have funding in the current year that we're in for Wheels. Obviously, it was not, it was not, it was designed services. It was not services that would, you know, lead to any, you know, construction activity during the current year. What we've done is we reprioritized some of those design services using Ratio, which is the firm, the firm that's helping us with the planning, design, the engagement for the site. So any movement that we would need to take would be part of the, you know, the CIP program for which this project is already active in that with current year approvals as well as anticipation of additional dollars being added to the project in future years.
So if we were to say, let's move this forward now, do you think there's already enough funding in the CIP in the next couple of years to cover the costs that we're looking at?
So my memory is pretty good. I do believe there was a pretty close to $2 million in the CIP for the year that we're in.
Okay.
An estimated amount for Wheels.
Okay.
When you say next couple of years, we actually do recalibrate the CIP every year based upon progress, you know, design progress, how quickly we're going to get to actually making, entering into a contract and actually doing construction. So, you know, whenever we're putting the CIP together, it is, you know, it is a plan and a projection.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. But the resources are in there. We could start now.
The resources are in there over time. We may would have to make some type of, you know, CIP amendment or something of that sort. But there is anticipation that this site is going to be programmed, programmed out over the next few years. I believe it is anticipated to have a full, you know, completion date by 2026. So within the next four, you know, three to four years in total.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And this may be a Parks and Rec question. Do you anticipate any of the other work that's happening on the site? Or how do you anticipate that work that's going to be happening on the site interacting with the Wheel space? And are there any potential conflicts that would make, you know, that if we were to make Wheels, if we were to bring Wheels back online and then continue with the rest of the construction, would that then have a negative impact on residents' ability to use Wheels? Or vice versa? Like, would bringing Wheels online, you know, if we did it in the opposite direction, would that have a negative impact on folks' ability to use the pool, the splash pad, all of that stuff?
Both projects can happen concurrently. I think that, you know, we can open up the roller rink site concurrently. We are going to need to develop the design plans for the aquatics. Right now, we're just in the planning phase. So we actually haven't progressed that project to the next phase. We'll be presenting to city council probably in January the outcome of that process, which is kind of like the master planning of the Wheels, balance of that site for the aquatic specific. But let's just say that they were both moving forward. We could work the projects concurrently. You could open the rink and still develop the aquatics.
Okay. Great. And the aquatics, the rink is much further down the road, it sounds like what you're saying, than the aquatics facility in terms of the planning process?
Well, right, because this assessment really just came before us. But, you know, certainly it could be advanced based on priority.
Okay. Cool, thank you. I mean, personally, I feel like if we, this is something that lots of people in our community are really excited about. Wheels is a really fun place for young people especially and a great place for families. And just has been, you know, a really important, has been a really important social, social spot for folks in Durham for a long time. I think it's worth, I think it's worth this amount of, investing this amount of money in bringing Wheels back online. I think if we can do it sooner rather than later, then it's worth doing that as well. And I would be, I would be ready to support, yeah, to support moving this work forward on as quick a timeline as is reasonable and doable for staff. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams, did you have something?
Yeah. Could I be reminded, what year was Wheels built?
I think I was in high school.
Okay.
High school. It's been a while.
It's been a while. It's over 20 years. I mean.
So it was grandfathered in, in the way it was built with these ADA? It's really bad off. Okay, great. I guess my other question, since Councilmember Johnson asked most of them, the design fees or design process, is it a way? Well, I guess, what would be most beneficial? To do a design phase for just the roller, the skating rink? And then a design phase for the other projects that may come on board? Or could we do it all together? I guess timeline would be a matter.
I think it's really just a prioritization of this board, really, what you'd like to see. And they could happen concurrently. We could run them separately. There's really no downside other than that we have to procure design services for both.
Gotcha. Would the design, I guess while we're actively doing a design process, would that limit use for the rink?
If the rink was open and we could still run a parallel path for procuring design services for the balance of the aquatics on the site?
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you. I'm looking forward to having more activities for our youth and actually our adult youth as well across the city. Thank you.
According to the internet, Wheels has been there about 40 years.
Yes. Yeah. I skated there quite a bit.
I was one year old, one year old.
And I was at Hillside, so yes, it's been there a while. I just wonder from a, from a budgeting process, is it better to run both together or separately? In terms of the overall plan, that was before my time, and just trying to get an idea of how do you do it? And making sure that we kind of advance the cause of moving Wheels back online. I'm fully supportive of that. But want to make sure that we have an overall picture that the council previous to us had already started and how they mesh.
One thing I wanted to add, as we consider that question, and Henry's more than capable to fully answer that, but just one thing I wanted to add, this is Wade Walcott with Parks and Recreation. The, as the manager pointed out, this is us coming back to you with the assessment of the facility from a very baseline, ADA, maintenance, mechanicals, what's going to make it work. One thing that I think we should consider as we move forward with this is the opportunity advantage of having maybe some folks with experience and operators that in addition to this work, that the basics, they may see as, well, yes, those are ADA, mechanical basics. But here are some other things that might need to be upgraded to be a really good, you know, well-run skating rink. So there could be, and it may be small in the grand scheme of things, I don't know. I just wanted to make sure we keep that in mind as that additional part, that they may come in and say, yes, we need to add these features and those features. So I just wanted to point that out as well. And so that might help us. We can do these things concurrently. When we look at some sort of RFP, RFQ process for those particular vendors, one of the things we're also going to do with some of the resident committees is have them tell us what some of those standards and scoring criteria that we should value higher than others with prospective bidders and what they bring and how they want to operate the facility. So that would happen as well. So there's going to be that input. We're also going to look for an opportunity to have a community member be a part of the selection team so that this is, you know, uber-transparent as that process goes. So I just wanted to add those things.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, colleagues, for some really excellent questions. I just wanted to reconcile two things. I think, Madam Manager, you said that build-out might be, could take years. And on the report, it says total duration 15 months. What is that 15 months referring to?
That's just specific to the roller rink.
The rink? Okay, and the build-out, you were talking about the, okay. So from go, 15 months, the building could be up to code?
Correct.
Okay, great. Which, that's remarkable. That's wonderful. Which I think underscores that if we do that, then at month 15, you know, I would want to have a vendor already identified who's going to be able to run the rink. Because handing us a set of keys to a fresh rink without, you know, somebody who knows how to run a roller rink, you know, nothing's more frustrating than riding by a building that's ready to be used but can't be used yet because we're still looking for the vendor. So, you know, just a reminder to colleagues that if we do this, we need, I think we need to be running that process concurrently, identifying an operator as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Freeman had her hand raised, but let me ask the city manager, she did want to speak to something. And then I'll refer back to colleagues.
This will be brief and I hope not repetitive. But I did understand, and we've had conversations inside, that if the council did commit to moving forward with this renovation, we've looked, this 1.7 million, we would be taking the step that it is going to open. So we would, and we would be running the art request for qualifications at the same time because we would want the professional that's going to run the facility, as Wade has said, to kind of be part of that renovation. Sometimes small spaces, sometimes big spaces. But we would not renovate the whole thing and then wait till we get to the end to look for a provider. We would be, we would be starting those almost at the same time.
Great. Councilwoman Freeman and Councilwoman Capaglia.
I just have a question, if it's kosher for a council member to serve on this steering committee that Wade has been talking about? I don't, I didn't know if it was possible to just serve on the committee. Is it possible for council members to serve on the committee that Wade is talking about?
I don't see a problem. I'll turn to our attorney.
I don't see a problem with council members serving on committees that advise the departments. So, I mean, whenever that committee is established and members are identified, that's something that could be entertained, certainly.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Capaglia?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. Just so I can understand around the financing or the money piece of it, the 1.7 or a little bit over is just basically to get the building to code. And any other, and we think we have that in the current CIP, that's actually already been allocated to Wheels and not to, I just want to make sure that it's not because we're reorganizing projects. I want, so that was one question for staff, that that's actually been, you know, earmarked for that. And then secondly, if we come, you know, it was very clear in the report, you know, this is just the dated carpet, the dated kitchen, you know, all of these things would remain. And so then my question is, if we bring in a vendor who basically says, you know, really to have a top-tier or, you know, high-quality space, you're going to need to do these other things, then what's the plan around that?
So, may I respond? So being earmarked to, the money that is in the CIP for the year that we are three months into right now, the money that is in the CIP is not earmarked for this project because we did not know that it would be advanced. We have funding that is in the CIP that is for the fiscal year for the multi-year Wheels project. And there are times when we, when we put the CIP together, the timing of when that funding is spent and those kinds of things, we, you know, we have to make adjustments sometimes. So I do want to make it very clear that if the council provides us direction to proceed with this renovation or, you know, renovation of Wheels, we will have to look at what we at what we will need this fiscal year in order to execute agreements and compare it to what we already have approved in the CIP. And if it is not enough, we will have to bring a CIP amendment for consideration to the council. We didn't do that in advance.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Yes, ma'am.
So basically, it's, there's a, there's a Wheels bucket, but not necessarily a Wheels roller rink bucket. I just want to make sure. So then, what, what I want to make sure is, you know, I think this is a good idea, community is pretty loud about it, I think everyone on here has very fond memories of Wheels. And so I think this is a win for community, and I think the fact that it could be done in almost 15 months is also a win. And it seems that we can still do the Wheels kind of facilities plan, even if we move this one small piece forward sooner. If there's going to be some reorganization within the CIP that affects other projects outside of Wheels, I think that that is something that needs to be communicated to the public. And I think that's something that we should understand as council members, too. If it's all in the Wheels bucket and you're just moving things within that around, that's different to me than, oh, actually, we didn't have that money, and so this is affecting another project. And then I do think that that needs to be communicated. Thank you.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I, I just want to make sure I state very clearly that I think this should move forward. And I'm not certain that, how the running concurrent will work, but I do think that having an operator in place might move the construction part along a whole lot quicker than we're talking about. And so I would like to make sure that that process gets moving, like, immediately. And so I'm not sure how that, how you need to receive that, or how you need to, like, organize that. But you got to tell me what you need in order for you to move forward on, on.
Have difficulty hearing you with your mask on.
You have to tell me what you need in order to move forward, so that we can get the rink open as soon as possible.
So I, I'm talking, I'm, I'm responding, but I'm speaking in the microphone. We are looking for direction from the council as to whether or not we're going to advance this particular renovation of the building that exists and proceed on this 15-month schedule. It is not an action item, because we do have to go back and make sure of some of the things that have been discussed here, the timing of when spending would take place, make sure we have enough funding in the CIP to do it, as well as move forward with evaluating whether or not there would be any current year costs before we do another budget, current year costs for, you know, engaging a, an operator or, and, and that type of thing. So we, we can't, we can't answer that today, but we do, we won't be able to answer any of it unless we get direction to move from today forward or to delay to another time.
So if you need direction on the move forward, are you saying like a thumbs up this time, thumbs down? Is that what?
It is not an action item, so it would be.
Okay.
It could be direction from the council.
Madam Mayor, if you would like to have a thumbs up, I am.
Thumbs up, everybody? All right. My only question would be, and I think it's, it's what Councilwoman Caballero has indicated, is we need to, and I don't know how you get to the answer, I'm figuring out what it's going to cost to actually run it as a rink, right? That's the, that's the unknown factor, is that piece. So as, as close as you are, I've talked to the county, the city manager, and she's saying that, you know, that has to go through an RFP process. So that, that, that's where I think we have the hole. How much will it actually cost to run the rink itself? And.
I was just going to say, I'm thinking it's more of a, the opposite, more like the DPAC and BPAC, are we, is that what we're setting up, or are we setting up the operator, we're paying an operator?
So there, there are other management agreements that we have, as well as operating agreements. We've obviously never negotiated one for a roller rink. So we, we do not know if we'll be sharing profits, or if we will be adding supplements. Probably that is something we can get some ideas about before we were to actually do an RFP, to get a specific provider for us, but we don't have that today. I don't think we have that today. Wade is coming up to provide some information, but we, we do not have that today.
That's right. And, and one possible option we can think about and why it would be helpful, you know, one, Madam Manager, and just make sure I'm, I'm aligned with you, is we recognize we have a good estimate here of, for the facility. And we realize regardless of funding source, CIP or other, we know that wasn't a planned expense. So that, that's a new expense that I know that we're talking about, of how can we cover that? And know that since it's not a planned expense, it will likely have some sort of impact to something else. We don't know what that is yet, and that's what we'll come back to you. What would be beneficial of having, and one option to consider, beneficial of having a process where we would do an RFQ process where prospective bidders could talk about their interest, we could set, we could provide this information, this is a baseline estimate of what the city's investment looks like for here. Perspective bidders, I could see like a pre-bid meeting type thing, where they could come to the facility that they're interested in, know that, what we're working with, and then maybe part of their submittal is recommendations of what they would do to improve or enhance, along with recommendations on how they would foresee funding that investment, whether that was solely on the operator, whether that they proposed the city to do that, or whether it was a joint shared cost. At that point, we'll have really solid information of experienced providers, a clear vision of what the facility could look like, and a real number, and how much that the city and how much this partner would actually invest to make this all happen.
Councilwoman Johnson, Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one, and I'm sure y'all are already thinking about this, but just one thing I wanted to flag in that plan was making sure that there's enough city involvement and subsidy, so that the rates stay reasonable.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's an emphasis for all of us, too. And that's likely part of the scoring criteria that we'll establish, and making sure it's online, on par with a lot of our other fees and charges that we provide the residents, because the, the finances will not be a roadblock, roadblock to participation.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I know we don't, there is no full cost capture in any city, you know, in any City Parks and Rec program, and if we're turning this over to a private provider who would want that, I would be concerned. So as long as, you know, to make sure people are on the same page as us, that like, we're going to subsidize this, we're going to keep the rates low.
Thank you. We do have Ms. Gideon Bueno, who has the remarks for one of our speakers, Danielle Spratley. Just letting you know, we'll allow you to read her comments as soon as the formal presentation ends. Does anyone have any other questions for our former presenters?
Now that we're like all in the weeds of this process, and it's complicated, and it's going to take a long time, and we're thinking about all the details, I just want to remind us all of that day when the administration came into our work session and told us that Parks and Rec were considering entering negotiation to buy Wheels. And just the way every single person in that room's face lit up on that news, like, we were so incredibly excited to have this opportunity. And I think it's going to be a really amazing project. Now, now we have to go through the hard part of actually, actually doing it, but I think it's going to be a really amazing project, and it's going to, it's going to justify all the super happy people in that room when we, when we first heard the news. Thanks.
That, I'm excited about this. Ms., Ms. Gideon, Ms. Bueno? We're ready for Ms.
Madam Mayor, just one other thing I wanted just to add on to.
Okay, great. Whenever they can hear me, just let me know.
We can hear you, you may proceed.
Okay, great. Oh, you can hear me? Wonderful. Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for offering me this time to speak. My name is Danielle Spratley. Just to account to you all, I am working from home and calling in from home, so any snoring that you hear in the background is my foster dog. But I am, I'm calling in today to speak in support of the city's investment in revitalizing the former Wheels roller rink. I was not able to speak before the presentation because of technical difficulties, and now that I've heard the conversation that you all are having, I think that was serendipity. So I'm the owner of Quad Goals Skate Fitness, which offers private roller skating classes for adults in Durham Central Park, as well as private lessons for adults and children. Quad Goals is a black-owned, woman-owned, LGBTQ-owned small business that I founded in 2021. I'm also a coach for Bolson Roller Derby, which is Durham's roller derby team, and I'm a former member of Carolina Roller Derby and Team North Carolina All-Stars. I am interested in offering a little bit more information about the investment that you'll be making in Wheels and giving you some information about conversations that are happening around the operating of Wheels. So I founded Quad Goals Skate Fitness in 2021, and in this, our second year of operations, we've seen a nearly 600% increase in participants. To date, 100% of our classes in 2022 have sold out completely. That's every single one of our classes. We represent just a tiny slice of the roller skating community in the area, and I know that there's a large customer base for this rink. It's actually much larger than it was pre-pandemic. And pre-pandemic, the Triangle area was supporting three profitable roller skating rinks, and it currently only has one. As a longtime member of the roller skating community, I can attest to the fact that roller rinks are not just local destinations within a city, but they are also regional ones, serving residents in surrounding cities as well. I can tell you that the rink will be fragmented by skaters traveling from other cities across the state, because I know that it was in the past, and demand has only grown since then. Visitors will go out to eat and they'll shop, large events will draw overnight visitors to the area. For example, events like Disco Sweat, which was a skate party held at Wheels, and roller derby games regularly drew hundreds of skaters and skaters to Wheels, along with the regular crowd of families, teenagers, and the roller skating community that frequented Wheels on a regular basis. The Triangle is home to four roller derby teams that could use the rink for games and practices. Those are City Roller Derby, Carolina Roller Derby, Collision Men's Derby, and Raleigh Junior Rollers. Knowing all of this, knowing that there is such a strong demand for the use of this space.
Ms. Spratley? Thank you so much for your comments today. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to piggyback on Councilperson Johnson's excitement and reminiscing back when it first started. And the, one of the other things that's important for us to share in this excitement is what also has happened as a part of this project, because it's a larger project that sometimes gets overshadowed, the, the whole Splash and Play project, that the Long Meadow Park and East End Park are a part of this. And where we were two years ago, we're looking at these two parks and, and no plans for, no plans for improvements. And we know the, the history of segregation in these parks, and the separation of them. And now, as a part of this process, not only are we looking at adding the first pool in nearly two decades to the east side of Durham, but we're working with the community on making these improvements at Long Meadow Park and East End Park. And not our ideas, but the community's ideas of what kind of features and improvements they want in both of these areas. And looking at the space in between East End and, and Long Meadow Park, and realizing that's city property, and we're not doing anything with it right now with the sign and signal shop. So now there's a great opportunity that residents and us have, have, have looked at, that we can make this one big connected space. We have the R. Kelly Bryant Bridge Trail is also is going through there. So just sharing your excitement, because not only is it this location with a skating opportunity and a swimming opportunity, but an opportunity to have real design, really great improvements that came from the community for these two additional parks that we didn't have before. So I just had to add that.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Freeman?
I'll make it very brief. I just want to thank you for the comments, and just acknowledging that those, those plans that came before COVID, you know, it's kind of like it's, it fell on the, on, like in a different space. And I feel like it's really important to note that having Wheels closed right now, with few, few opportunities for, for youth to do much activities outside of basketball or tennis or soccer, like, there, there are certain things that youth like to do, and skating is one of them. And I, I really want to say, like, it's, it's hurt to have Wheels closed, and it's really exciting, as Councilmember Johnson mentioned, to have the opportunity to open it back up. I'm going to pray that it doesn't take 15 months. I'm also going to work, and so I am offering to, to support and be a part of the subcommittee to just trying to make sure that we do.
Councilwoman Freeman? We have to take a break. All of us are getting older up here, please. We need to take a break. We had a, we got to take a break. I have people squirming. All right. So at this time, we're going to try to take about a five-minute break, so we'll be very quickly, because we need to return back to two other items. All right.
PB first?
Yeah.
PB.
We are next?
You are. You are.
You need control L?
Yeah. Okay. It's awesome.
I'll always do anything with it.
All right. I believe we are ready. We're looking for Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Hyman. But I think we could go ahead and start with our presentation. We're gonna come back to order, everybody. And we're go, gonna go ahead and start with item participatory budgeting, item 10.
The Budget Engagement Manager at Budget and Management Services. And this here is my colleague.
Good afternoon. I'm Fallon Thompson, the Senior Engagement Analyst for Budget Management Services. Today, we are going to present participatory budgeting, PB Durham, Cycle Three, for all of you. Our agenda today shows we will be discussing the North Carolina Evaluation and Recommendations, sorry, North Carolina Central University Evaluation and Recommendations, our PB Cycle Three Goals and Recommendations. What is participatory budgeting? Participatory budgeting, also called PB, is a democratic process first developed in Brazil in 1989. Now there are more than 1,500 PB programs worldwide. PB lets residents decide how to spend part of the public budget. PB is the mechanism also for local government to respond directly to the voice needs and priorities of its residents. Durham is one of three organizations in North Carolina that have PB. Greensboro and Mecklenburg County also have PB programs. Mecklenburg County launched their program last year. This shows a standard PB process. PB is a civic engagement process that consists of four phases: idea collection, proposal development, voting, and implementation. Idea collection: residents brainstorm ideas. In proposal development, community members work with city staff to vet those ideas. Voting: projects are placed on the ballot for residents to photo. During implementation, the winning projects are approved and then implemented. These are the typical players that have a role in any PB process. The names may vary per organization, but the responsibilities are usually the same. Our PB Steering Committee oversees the PB process and ensures impact and empathy and equity. Our PB staff in Durham consists of two FTEs, and they are responsible for implementing the process and working with our internal technical staff and residents, including our budget delegates. Our budget delegates are resident volunteers that represent their communities. They work with the technical staff, the PB Steering Committee, and city staff to identify local needs, discuss, and prioritize the initial project ideas. Our supporting departments are technical staff that help vet the projects and determine feasibility to implement them within the PB timeframe. They also provide cost estimates and offer technical assistance on project proposals. In Cycle One, city council approved 2.4 million with $800,000 provided to each ward. Cycle One consisted of one-time capital improvement plan projects and had a project minimum of $50,000. Durham residents and students 13 years and older were allowed to vote on the projects. Cycle Two looked very different from Cycle One. City council adopted the process to address the needs of residents most affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and approved $1 million to nonprofits and community organizations serving those residents. Projects had a maximum of $50,000. Durham residents and students 13 years and older were also allowed to vote. We are committed to improving our PB process with each cycle we do. To help accomplish that, we partnered with North Carolina Central University's MPA program to conduct a third-party evaluation of Cycle One. Throughout the spring and summer of this year, we spent time reviewing that third-party evaluation from North Carolina Central University. We also had discussion, internal discussions among ourselves about best practices for PB. We also created an internal advisory committee consisting of the city's Equity and Inclusion Department and the Office of Performance and Innovation. We then had discussions with PB offices across the country to understand their processes and their lessons learned. Here is an overview of the recommendations from our North Carolina Central University Evaluation. I want to highlight numbers six, seven, and eight. We want to continue to promote equity and participation at each phase of the process. We also want to incorporate evaluation throughout the process, which is why we want to meet on a monthly basis with our internal advisory committee that I mentioned earlier. We also want to improve the functionality of our online portal, social pinpoint, and use that in our mobile presence to increase our engagement. Here are some key takeaways from, that we want to incorporate this cycle. We want to be intentional in our processes and responsibilities. We found that maintaining intentionality when justifying PB, planning PB, and executing PB is central to the success of PB Cycle Three. We thus propose that the PB Steering Committee revise their goals and values as described in their original 2018 PB handbook with an emphasis on increasing civic engagement and civic education to establish a more equitable, just process. Communication and collaboration. We found that increased dialogue between all stakeholders is crucial for maintaining clarity, efficiency, and equity throughout each phase. Our stakeholders include the PB staff, our residents, our budget delegates, the PB Steering Committee, and our supporting internal departments. We thus propose that PB staff schedule time to have focused sessions with different departments to gather feedback on how they want to be involved with PB Cycle Three and gauge their capacity. That leads us to engagement and capacity building. We found that improving tech access and functionality, working with community organizations, and mapping out our engagement is essential to a PB process that equitably engages residents and our external stakeholders. We propose that the PB staff and the PB Steering Committee work together to identify communities that should be targeted during our idea collection by analyzing demographic data and using the Neighborhood Comping mapping software. We want to initiate improved features to the social pinpoint platform to assist with our idea collection phase. Our PB Steering Committee is brand new this year, with most of our members joining in July and August. So what have we been doing so far? Well, in August, our leadership positions were filled, and in September, the P, the PB Steering Committee had their first Equity and Inclusion Training led by Sharon Williams, pictured in the far right, and we also held our PB Retreat. At the retreat, the committee had their second Equity and Inclusion Training, as well as learn about previous PB cycles. During our committee, our September committee meeting, members voted on the recommendations for PB Cycle Three. Our Steering Committee plans to finalize their measurable goals for PB Cycle Three during our October committee meeting. These are the three draft measurable goals that they have thus far. We would like to engage more diverse populations, implement projects to serve the most underserved and marginalized communities in Durham, and increase community engagement and decision-making process of city resources. Next, Carmen is going to talk about our recommendations for PB Cycle Three. Thank you.
All right. So we recommend returning to the original high-community engagement, capital infrastructure-dominant model of PB Cycle One. These projects are one-time capital projects that may include physical infrastructure, technological improvement, and community enhancements. These may, these projects may require operating costs, but does not require the city to hire additional staff. Once, these projects are more visible to community members, and they provide an opportunity for direct engagement with our residents. However, we do recommend moving forward with two modifications. One, council adoption of an extended timeline, and two, to replace the distribution of funding from the ward-based system to a citywide system. So an extended timeline, the extended timeline will extend the Phase One of the PB cycle an additional three months. So this means that we'll have voting in the fall and not in the early summer, as we did in the original timeline. This additional three months will allow PB staff the time necessary to incorporate North Carolina Central's third-party recommendations, the feedback from conversations with PB offices across the country, as well as some of the conversations, some of the best practices we've had around, internal discussions around best practices. This will allow us the time to build the infrastructure necessary for an equitable, transparent, and innovative PB Cycle Three. So here, we're able to look at what the timeline will look like. So as you can see in the time, in their blue timeline, August and September was a time of preparation. So like Fallon mentioned, during this time, we onboarded a new PB Steering Committee mem, PB Steering Committee members. We went through Equity and Inclusion Training, and we mapped out what this next PB cycle's going to look like. October and November will be for community engagement. In the month of October, we planned to conduct engagement, to come to the community and speak to residents about what PB is, so that they start anticipating idea collection in November. Idea collection would take place the entire month of November. And additionally, you can see, the winter will be for preparation. And so December, December through January, we will work with our internal departments to really vet the ideas. We will be working on proposal development training for our PB delegates, as well as recruiting new PB delegates. So one of the things that we're going to incorporate in this new PB cycle is additional training for our PB delegates, so they're more comfortable during the proposal development phase. So some of the training that they're gonna go through is Equity and Inclusion. They're going to learn why an equitable process matters and what that means. They're gonna go through Neighborhood Compass training. So when they're out in the communities vetting these projects, they're familiar with how to use Neighborhood Compass and are able to identify where are Durham's most underserved and underrepresented communities. Additionally, we're gonna go through community engagement training for a more meaningful engagement opportunity. So when our PB delegates have to go to the community to speak with residents, they're able to speak with residents, have more meaningful engagement opportunities. And so an additional component, so that training is gonna take place in February, where, and where the proposal development is gonna run through March through July. So as you can see, that's one of the significant differences from the two timelines, that there's gonna be more time for the proposal development phase. So again, this will provide more time for a PB delegate to have conversations with our internal department, our attorney's office, and to be in the community, speaking with residents about these ideas that they're developing into potential projects that will be on the ballot. And so the, and, and August will be for assemblies. So once our, the ideas have been developed and are going on the ballot, August is gonna be for assembly. So we're gonna go out in the community, speak with residents about the projects that are in the ballot, and the potential impact these projects are going to have in their communities. And voting is gonna take place in September. And so in the, in the traditional timeline, as you can see, a lot of this is just more crunch. So October through December, again, will have engagement, but as you can see, January through May, the proposal development's gonna be significantly shorter, because during this time, we would have to do the training as well as the, the proposal development. So that one of, so that the, the, I'm sorry, the voting would take place in May. And so one of the reasons why we do voting either in May or in September is so it's in line with the academic year. We know that people in the summer tend to travel or sort of disengage and just sort of busy doing other things, and so we like to keep our voting in line with the academic year, so when people are around and more engaged. So that would either be in May or in September. And so here, we'll look at what are the key differences between these two timelines. So again, proposal development length is gonna be a couple months longer in the extended timeline, and there will also be pre-idea collection and pre-voting engagement. And so again, we will be incorporating engagement in October to speak to residents about what, about PB. PB is coming, so we start thinking about potential ideas they'd like to submit. And again, in, in August, we will be out in the community, speaking to residents about the projects that are in the ballot. And wintertime is gonna be for internal preparation. So one of the key things that, takeaways from the North Carolina Central Evaluation was to incorporate evaluation and assessment in each phase of the process. And so this time will allow us to really look at the data, see who participated in the PB process, and just find areas where we can improve to making sure that we are conducting an equitable process. So again, this time it's gonna be for gathering data, for mapping, budget delegate training, and the proposal development phase. And voting is gonna take place in the fall and not in the early summer, as had with the original timeline. All right, perfect. And so the next modification that we are recommending to the PB is to replace the distribution of funding from the ward-based system to a citywide base system. And so we would leverage Neighborhood Compass to create a map that identifies the most underserved neighborhoods and communities in Durham. So Neighborhood Compass is a community resource that tracks changes in the community with data. We will use this data to understand where are Durham's most underserved and underrepresented communities. So we're gonna look at key features. For example, it could be where are the communities of color? Where are the highest eviction rates? What are the median household incomes? And these are amongst some layers that we are discussing. So we will use this map to create this layers that will, will, will help us identify the communities to strategize. And so this does not mean that anyone in Durham can participate. Any resident in Durham can participate in PB process. What this map is gonna advise us is the communities that we're going to strategize and prioritize in our engagement efforts. We understand that if we don't prioritize engagement in these communities, we will not hear from them. And so as we are planning our engagement, this is where we're gonna make- And so as we are planning our engagement, this is where we're going to make sure that our boots are in the ground, so that we can hear from these residents. And so again, we want to support funding projects that are equitable for the community. And so what will this citywide funding process looks like? So again, we will work with our PB Steering Committee members, with the city's Equity and Inclusion Department, to first define and have a common understanding of who are Durham's most underrepresented communities. That is key for all of us to be on the same page and understand why this is important. Then, we will work with DataWorks and leverage Neighborhood Compass to create this map that will advise us on what communities to target. It is also important to know that, so like I said, we're going to use this map to help us strategize the communities that we're going to identify, but anyone in Durham can participate. Another thing that is important to add is to ensure that we are prioritizing projects based on equity and not the equal distribution of funds, is add two additional layers to our project scoring matrix. And so in our PB Cycle 1, the categories that we used were equity, impact, and feasibility to score the project. So we plan on adding two additional layers. The first layer is, did this project or is this project in one of these communities in this map? And two, is this idea submitted by someone in that community? And that second layer is very important, because that tells us that this idea came from someone in that community who understands the need of the community, and not from someone in the outside who's prescribing what that community needs. And so again, these layers have, the scoring matrix has not been completed. We will be working with our PB Steering Committee members in the months ahead to finalize what our scoring matrix is going to look like. We will also be working with our Equity and Inclusion Department Innovation Team to making sure that we're using matrix and methods to allow us to collect data. Data is going to be very important, because this is what's going to drive us, so that we're making sure that we are targeting the right neighborhoods and the right communities. So if approved by council, PB Cycle 3 is going to fund one-time projects that are related to physical infrastructure, technological improvement, and community enhancement with an extended timeline. This will add approximately three months. So that means that voting would take place in the fall and not in the early summer, and funds will be distributed on a citywide basis. So that means that we will not allocate evenly distribution of funds per ward, but they're really going to prioritize the neighborhoods and communities that are most underrepresented in Durham. So what are the next steps for PB staff and the PB Steering Committee? So we are finalizing our PB rulebook. So in our next PB Steering Committee member in October, we will finalize our PB rulebook, and as Fallon said, they have their draft goal, and so we will be finalizing that. They will be going through Neighborhood Compass training. Our PB Steering Committee will do the next training on equity and inclusion, and we will be working to create that asset map that's going to inform us of where are Durham's most underserved communities, so that we can strategize our engagement efforts around these communities. And we will begin our community engagement in October, so we'll be out in the community in October, speaking to residents about PB. And finally, we will be updating in the winter our project evaluation matrix. So these are the metrics that we mentioned, that are used by the budget delegates to develop the ideas into proposals that will eventually make it to the ballot. Questions?
I'll open it up to my colleagues. I like that presentation. Very good. It was excellent. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you very much. I appreciate the acknowledgement that it's not equitable to use the ward system in the same way, and so I'm looking forward to seeing PB 3.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Comby.
Thank you. I appreciated the presentation. Really great information. I don't really have any questions, just gratitude. I'm excited to see PB 3. I can't believe we're already on the third round, and just, I think that moving it to the fall, also, May is testing for our schools, and we do rely a lot on our schools for that 13, that youth component for voting, and so I think that that was also really strategically smart. So thank you for that. That's all. Thanks.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, y'all, so much for this presentation and for all the work that you've been doing. I've been having a lot of fun with our new steering committee. It's almost entirely new people, just because of the nature of the turnover and all the folks coming in at the beginning of the first cycle, so it's a whole new group of folks who are really excited to get involved. We talked about this already, but I was wondering if you could clarify for the rest of the council, that the extended timeline from August, from August to September to August to September, would then repeat in the next cycle, so that we wouldn't move permanently to a 15-month implementation period that we would go back to a 12?
So no, so there will be a short overlap, and so I think that's a great thing about this timeline, that it really incorporates a lot of time for preparation in advance, so that, you know, we'll have the following year will be for implementation, and then, you know, following the next summer, we will be preparing to sort of start the idea collection again in November.
Right. Awesome. Thank you. And yeah, and I do think the August-September engagement and voting, more September, well, August for campuses and then September for K-12 schools, will be a lot easier. We had, in our first year, we had a lot of struggles, y'all, some of y'all will remember, with schools and EOGs, and teachers being concerned that they didn't want to take any time away from EOGs to have the kids vote in the classrooms, and so we ended up like back-channeling the administration and going to the teachers' union and just handing out ballots to individual teachers, like, hey, you want to? But it was not the most efficient way to make things happen, so I think it would be, if we can this year, like, finally kind of institutionalize that partnership with the public schools, where we are either through, either through the district office or through guidance, you know, guidance counselors or civics teachers, social studies teachers, like, giving them PB materials that they can use in lessons, making sure they're getting, you know, getting their students to vote. My kid voted in PB in our last cycle in school and was very excited about it. So yeah, I think there's a lot of learning opportunity there. And then one final thing I wanted to clarify, I know in our last round, we had some issues with capital, when we contracted with a nonprofit to do a capital project on nonprofit property, and I'm still not 100% clear on whether that's allowed. The projects that we did shifted in different ways, but we had like the ramps for Habitat, the garden at El Futuro, LGBTQ youth center, there may have been one more, and I know that several of those projects had to be like retweaked in order to meet legal requirements. And I'm not clear on whether we can have on our ballots for Cycle 3 capital projects that are going to be built on private land or nonprofit land rather than city land.
And that's a great point, and, you know, this is why the proposal development is going to be a little bit longer, so we have more time to check in with the city's attorney's office to making sure that we sort of work those things out.
Okay, so it's possible. So we, so people can submit ideas for capital projects on non-city property, and they'll go through a vetting process to determine whether they're actually doable?
Yes.
Okay. Are you sure? You're giving me a side eye?
Andrew Holland, Budget Management Services Department. I believe that question should be directed to our Deputy City Attorney.
Yeah, Fred Lamore. So I think that it is, that was an issue that we did have. Last time, we had to tweak contracts, said to make them so they fit under, the state, complied with state law issues, and I would say that it is problematic to have a private entity end up owning a capital improvement that's made with city dollars. I'm not saying it's impossible, but there has to be some real evidence that the benefit is going to be, for the useful life of that capital improvement, is going to be for the benefit of the general public, and sometimes that's not possible, depending on who you're working with. If there were other ways of providing a benefit to that program or effort where we're not putting money in capital improvements, that's a preferred mode of operation. The other issue and hurdle is that when we do use public dollars for capital improvements, we have to comply with bidding laws, the same bidding laws that we have to comply with when we go out and solicit for bidding, and that can be onerous for, and it can be, cause complications in the, in their schedule, you know, just because they're not used to having to comply with those. So, you know, as I think our office has said, we'll look at, we'll work closely, we have worked closely with the participatory budgeting folks, and, you know, where there are proposals, we'll evaluate them and maybe make suggestions if we see conflicts, but it's just, it is, it can't be problematic. That's all.
Yeah, okay. Understood. I'm, are y'all of the opinion that it is still worth having people submit proposals for capital improvements on private land that would then be evaluated, rather than just taking that off the table from the beginning?
I think this is a conversation that our PB delegates will have with the city attorney's office, once they're vetting these ideas.
Okay.
And so the extended time will allow us to have more conversations and see if we can work it out. If not, it'll fall off the ballot.
Yeah. Great. Sounds good, y'all. I'm looking forward to getting back out in the streets in my PB shirt and taking some ideas down at the bus station. Hit me up when it's time to go tabling. I really enjoy it, and yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a great cycle. I'm really excited to have us back to our normal rhythm post-COVID. And thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Great presentation. All right. We will now move to our final presentation today on the supplemental items, which is item number 32, presentation from DataWorks titled, "Who Owns Durham?" That's interesting.
Hello, everyone. How are you?
We are well.
Hanging in. It's been a long afternoon. Oh, thanks, Amber. I'm going to try to be loud enough with my mask on. If I get not loud enough at any point, just give me some kind of silence. It'll be better. Yeah. Great. Thanks, Amber. Let me start with this. All right. Well, okay. So, again, I appreciate the time to be able to talk with y'all. This is a presentation that's in response to a request from the mayor to talk a little bit more about information, data, and other sort of historical background, contemporary background that's related to affordable housing in Durham, since we had the chance, or y'all had the chance on September 9th, I believe, to have your housing retreat, and there's a big conversation going on currently with y'all about affordable housing, and this is sort of a next way to kind of keep in the rhythm of conversation around that and inform it with some data and some other historical context. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to step into that flow of learning and discussion with y'all, and look forward to any other way that I can be helpful from the perspective of DataWorks. And this presentation briefly is called, "Who Owns Durham?", which is actually a project of DataWorks that goes back to about 2018, and prompted by questions about how our nonprofit affordable, nonprofit affordable housing providers in Durham can actually acquire property at scale when they're trying to compete against out-of-state corporations that buy things out of pocket before they even show up in the market in some cases. So it was a frustrating moment for the nonprofits, but it was an illustrative one for us, too, because we recognized that the type of business practice involved in doing this was a pretty, a problematic one in a lot of ways, that wasn't on our radar as much yet. We learned that some of these corporations were typically evicting tenants three times more often than the prior owners were. It opened up a can of worms, and we've been paying attention to it ever since, but that's why this is called, "Who Owns Durham?" It belongs to a narrative for us as well. I'm here on behalf of DataWorks NC. We are a nonprofit based in Durham, North Carolina. Our mission, as you see here, is to democratize data to facilitate empowered and productive and equitable community in Durham. We see that as being done through prioritizing Durham's communities of color, low income, and historical disinvestment, and we do this in collaboration with neighbor's communities, nonprofits, and local agencies that share goals of racial equity and community power. We feel like these are essential pieces of the puzzle for racial equity, and that's how we consider democratization to move forward for our work. So again, this is a request that came to us fairly recently, and fortunately, I'm not bringing a set of slides that I worked on over a nine-day period for y'all to kind of consume in this sort of rapid turnaround. This is work that we've been, again, digesting, sharing, learning in community with people for years now, and so a lot of what you'll see in this presentation comes from that work. It's work that has been informed by developing the Durham Compass, which you just heard about. It's work that's been informed by work we've done with Bragtown Community Association, Waltham, Merrick Moore, and with tenant groups over the last few years as well, and work we've done with the Public Health Department and others, too. It's all sort of in here. So it was easy for me to say, these are the pieces that feel strongest to bring to the conversation at this moment in time. With all of the data that we talk about, anytime we're talking about data in public places, or with anybody, anywhere, we begin presentations, taking time to illustrate how data today, maps and charts, don't make a full and total representation of the histories that are very present in the statistics all the same. So nothing in today's data points will be what they are without the influence of history, and every one of these representations bears directly on your work, my work, and all of our work in racial equity. And so for us, this also gives DataWorks folks a chance to name a few issues we face and try to honestly and equitably share statistical data, too. It will be irresponsible for us to not to talk about the history that turned it into what it is. So we start by doing that by observing that we're on and managing, in this room, too, land that was never ceded to white settlers by the Shakori and Tuscarora people who preceded colonial settlement. And this map that you see is the best geographic representation of that presence that we have right now. That's from the Native Land Digital Project based in Canada. Moving forward from that, white settlers developed the first comprehensive distribution of land, measuring land closely to establish property ownership, and then a system for managing that ownership. Not unlike the parcel fabric today, the map of land grants covers all of the land of the county. The power of claiming territory with boundaries and names on maps is established for Durham here for the first time. Not long after that, the accumulation of large areas of Durham for agricultural production using enslaved Black and Indigenous labor became the predominant characteristic of our mapped land. Cameron-Benham plantations, which you see here, were approximately 32,000 acres of Durham, Wake, and Granville Counties, with up to 8,000 additional acres in Person County. And it's important to keep in mind that the plantation dominated land use in antebellum times, but also long after, and this, for instance, is an illustration of the extent of Cameron-owned lands as of 1890. So the end of slavery on Cameron land led to a foundational period of migration toward and into Durham, but there are other plantation histories in our landscape, such as the Massey Plantation, which is said to have been where Hope Valley is today, the Roan plantation in eastern Durham, where Merrick Moore is today, and there are others as well that don't have as prominent an image in our minds as Stagville or Ferentash. Property always had rules stratifying us by whether we could legally own land, and then how much we might be able to accumulate. When it became illegal to formally zone communities by race in 1917, other privately-controlled tools, like racially restrictive covenants, were used. This is what you see on this map here. Through the 20s, through 1948, that was done legally with the sanction of the Supreme Court. Then through the 1960s, it was done as a standard business practice, even by Duke University, who put racial covenants on all of the properties of the Duke Forest subdivisions when they created them to attract elite professors from around the country. They're still part of our landscape today, and they're very difficult to remove, and what you see in this map is the extent of the presence of those covenants today that we've been able to map through the Hacking into History project that we're working on. So those are where we see them coming up. Another generation of this racialized land practice, and the demapping and use of data to endorse it and to frame it, greenlining. Other entanglements of law and private lending, private selling were rife in the 20th century. A generation after that racial zoning was made illegal, the homeowners' loan corporation risk maps became essential in the iconography of what America's apartheid was and is. Red areas, yes, but blue and green areas just as much. These used data to lock generations of Black and other racial, ethnic minority groups out of lending, but also to protect and prioritize it in white and upper-class neighborhoods. We need to use data to identify the privileging that happened, not simply reproduce anti-Black narratives, and for us, it's an important moment to say that the focusing on redlining alone in this map overlooks the power of, that's being transferred in that map as well. A generation after that, city projects doubled down, literally bulldozing Black neighborhoods with federal money. We all know this story very, very well. This was a very data-intensive process, though, with a full inventory of housing in, quote, blighted areas that documented the value, profitability, and characteristics of each of the properties that were scheduled to potentially be destroyed. The Durham County Urban Renewal Archives is an excellent resource for learning a lot more about that. It's accessible to all of us in the public library website, and that's where we could go to learn more about how intensive that process was in terms of administrative and data work. So these images right here are from the Bull City 150 uneven-grounded So these images right here are from the Bull City 150 uneven ground exhibit, and the image on the right is from 1972, when the work of dismantling Hayti was fairly complete. You know, we talk often about the destruction of the houses, but an interesting aspect of this, it just drives home how pervasive this was as a raising of a community, was that the street network itself was reconfigured as well. Like, this was never even a place of any human transaction after it was razed and scraped and turned into an entirely different real estate. So oftentimes in our presentations about how to use the Durham Compass, we'll stop there because the compass picks up data from 1970 and goes forward. But in thinking about the history that we inherit and that drives a lot of what the information is that we learn about in the compass, there's generations after that, too, right? So I say here to myself to remember that this is drawing out that historical narrative further by acknowledging way too many things on a single slide. Each of these deserves much, much greater depth, but, you know, in the 1980s, we were still figuring out what was gonna happen with the highway cutting through the town. Crest Street's a prominent story in how a community fought and described itself enough to be treated, taken seriously, and to be saved in a certain way. Its church is still across the highway, but they're there. The master tobacco settlement really ended tobacco production in America, and that was one of the things that really hit us, obviously, with the American Tobacco Town, right? Expansion of global free trade, our other big manufacturing was in textiles. So that was something that really went abroad when global free trade allowed for that, things like NAFTA and other agreements that allowed the workers in these sectors that were our anchors to be elsewhere for much cheaper labor. Demolition of Few Gardens and Fayetteville Street projects, this is another sort of deep, deep part of the... We talked just now about what happened with Hayti, right? These are also very dense communities of hundreds of people that lived together for a long time, both through these projects, Few Gardens and Fayetteville Street, and they were no longer there. County use of eminent domain to build a jail and a courthouse. This has just recently come to my attention, too, but the way that we've used the tools of our development of our community to do massive and large-scale prominent investments that are part of our downtown reconfiguring. Southwest-central Durham quality of life, again, community life things. This is really where there was a lot in the last couple decades of powerful, powerful work being done in neighborhoods. In northeast-central Durham, the city was really deeply engaged in this, too, with creating the Northeast-Central Durham Leadership Council. How do we bolster the community? How do we do that? How do we engage in their planning? Southside redevelopment is another one of these major, major investments in time and energy and resources that's happened in recent years. And 751 South, I don't want to switch the slide as I say 751 South, but I did. That's a major project that happened that you all probably still remember very well, and it ripples through the way we think of possibilities, I think, in terms of real estate in this town. In the 1980s through 2000s, I want to just draw attention to a couple of things here that really reference how we are the beneficiaries, the recipients, carrying the legacy of our investments over the last couple of decades, too. So this slide references some landmarks of the last 30 years or so that helped build the foundation of our current reality. We often listen to narratives of our current time and the struggles we live through as rather out of our control. The housing market, the state legislature, we can't change capitalism. These are things that we're hemmed in by, or these are landscapes that are structural and we don't have any influence over. But it would be remiss to not also acknowledge how much our public institutions invested in these things that we're going through, and it was risky and difficult decisions were made. On the last point that you see here, I'll go through these actually briefly. So in 1990, you probably all very well know there was a public vote, a bond referendum that voted against funding the baseball stadium, reversed by issuing the certificates of participation that invested in the stadium, that made the stadium financing possible. In 1993, Downtown Durham, Inc. was created to catalyze downtown investment. And in the late 1990s, the planning department decommissioned its small-area planning. And in an interview I did with Steve Medlin in 2008, he said, "That was done to be more responsive to the needs of the developer community," and that was realized to have been short-sighted at that time, 14 years ago. In the early 2000s, American Tobacco was redeveloped. That was also a major public investment, too. We put $14 million, I think, into the creation of the parking deck to make that project happen there. And in the last decade or so, the Innovation District is another one of these landmark downtown investments. So by 2011, we were noticed as a place for people all over the world with anywhere to go to be. So in the New York Times in 2011, this is a slide from years and years and years ago now, we've been talking about this for a long time. In 2011, the New York Times published Durham as the 35th of 41 places in the world to go visit because of things like Scratch Bakery. The way that the story of Durham was being disseminated around the world was one that didn't line up with what Durham's people lived through, right? And it was only a few years after that, 2016, that it was also getting this, that part of the narrative of what was not lining up. Who wasn't really invited into this narrative of what we were becoming was getting attention as well. The Atlantic published this article, "The Downside of Durham's Rebirth," talked to a lot of people that we know in the community who are still here, and that's another side of this, where people who have been here through this, are being pushed out by it, don't feel like they have anywhere to go compared to people with anywhere to go coming here to visit for fun. That tension of that experience is one that you all deal with every day, I know, and it's certainly one that is hard to describe with statistics. So we have, as a community, been clear that Durham's people need more control over public resources, and they should start with racial and class equity in our wellness, wealth, and safety. And these are a few prominent examples that I want to acknowledge that point in the direction of managing the impacts of gentrification as well and some of its more violent edges. We've heard about some of this today. Really important programming that's responsive to those tensions that I just described, too. Participatory budgeting, certainly aspiring to be in that place of community control over what we invest in. Bull City United as well. How do we have a perspective of what wellness is as a response to working through community violence? And eviction diversion, how do we keep people out of that chain, that cycle of devastating, like, social health, economic housing devastation that somebody experiences by having an eviction on the record? And forever home, basic income, the unarmed crisis response work, all of these things kind of fit into the space of how does a local institution do work that invests in that wellness, that quality of life in a way that's actually for everyone? So that's the background, that's the landscape that the data lay on in a certain kind of way. So I'll launch into a little bit about that. This is just to show that over the last decade, demographically, we've changed a little bit. Bear with me a second. We've increased in population by about 21%, which is pretty normal for the last few decades, actually. The largest increase in population over a single decade in recent, the last 40, 50 years, was actually from 1990 to 2000, when it increased by 23%. So this isn't a wild change in population for us. The percentages, you can see here, are pretty straightforward in terms of which demographic groups grew the most, which you can see Asian is 46%, Hispanic Latinx 39%, so on. The group that's now defining themselves, identifying as more than one race is a really large increase, obviously 246%. How does that compare, though, to the state and to the nation? And one of the big takeaways here is while we've grown about 57,000 people in the last 10 years, what's a little bit distinctive about our changes is really, you can see here that the purple, dark purple bars are Durham, the pink bars are lavender bars are NC, and blue is the United States. That in terms of total population, we've grown more than most places have. But in terms of the demographics of that, what really stands out is that we've grown less in terms of Asian population, but that we've actually grown a lot more in terms of white population compared to the other parts, whether North Carolina or the nation. In the national context, the US shrunk. The white population is negative 2.6% over the last decades, and we're up 18.7%. And that seems like an interesting takeaway from this, too. It's probably the most significant piece of this change demographically from the census that just came out. Who was moving to Durham? So this is, the handle on this is really from the American Community Survey, households making, the percentage of their income as compared to the poverty level, which was just a way to look at household income levels by the number of households and the new ones that have come to our community. For reference, you can see what those federal poverty levels are on the right. One-person households, still not quite $13,000 a year. You know, the poverty designation by the federal government is painfully inadequate, but this is what we have to look at in this particular table. And the thing that I think is most sort of important to take away from this is that most of the growth in our population, 90% of it, has been in that 300% of poverty rate and up. 72%, 73% here is the people making five times the poverty rate, the largest income bracket, really, the highest income bracket. So people making five times the poverty rate, which is a middle-class salary, and above. So that highest bracket of all-income households is where we've had most of our growth, and that category now is about 40% of our population in the county. So just to make a note as well, too, that in looking at this frame of poverty level and percentage of poverty level for household income, it's really just a way of proxying, like, the categories, the economic categories of who we are. Like, household-wise, how much money are people making that are moving here? It's not a suggestion of using that for any other standard of affordability or anything. Median homebuyer incomes are another way of looking at this. So what you see here is for the entire county, and the median income for homebuyers, folks that get a mortgage, move into a place to be an owner-occupant. This is not for landlords buying a place or investors, this is people moving into neighborhoods in Durham. And you can see there's been a general increase in that median household income over the last 15 years or so, but across the board, what has stayed steady throughout is the gap between households by demographics. So just, you know, pointing out the obvious here, that you can see that the white households moving into Durham are making a little over $100,000 median, half of them make more, half of them make less. And for Black households moving to Durham, that's somewhere closer to $65,000. And the same sort of distribution of those numbers by race and demographic, by types, by folks, is kind of persistent across all of the disaggregated information we look at. This is true even for the relatively higher-income people buying houses in Durham today, which is what you see here. And one other thing to point out here is that this is not hitting all parts of Durham in the same way, of course, right? I'll make one example. Southside, the median household income in 2017 for folks that lived there at that time was $16,000. The median homebuyer income that year and in each successive year was over $100,000. So within two years, the median household income in Southside tripled. So if you looked at that number, it went from $16,000 to $48,000. Like, what does that really mean? Well, it's because everybody that's been moving there is making $100,000 or more, or, you know, half of them make more and half of them make less. So 68% of the folks in 2019, 2021, just last year, that moved to Southside are white folks. 9% are Black, 4% are Latinx, and less than 1% are Asian. 15 or so percent didn't elect to include their race or demographic information in their mortgages or in the published data about their mortgages. But in that year, last year, 2021, the median homebuyer income across all those folks was $109,000 in Southside. So that's just an indication, a suggestion of what the dynamic is, again, that tension economically of change in neighborhoods in Durham. And people are moving here every day. So in such a period of rapid and damaging gentrification as this, all the great things said, we're also gonna say that it's a damaging process. Our institutions have been discussing and planning a great deal for these 20 or 30 people coming here every day. This is a common narrative. We've listened to it and talked about it for a long time, people coming here 20 or 30 a day. And it's a great number to have in hand when we're thinking about the agenda of growth, economic growth, and how to prepare for that and for real estate development. So we need to have more construction and highways jobs. We also have to have houses built and jobs ready for people that don't want to be here. But it's a very problematic number because it masks every one of our community that we lose on the other side of the equation, and there was no handle for that. So we've oriented our community planning to serve the newest person in the room effectively by using that number, relying on that, while the rest of the community is trying to deal with these historical trends that we've talked about and trying to pay their rent and their taxes or find a home. So you can see just from this most current data that the truth about migration is a lot more complicated. So just in this case, from 20, between 2018 and 2019, people coming to Durham every day were 57.2, people leaving every day, 58, households 36.5, people leaving 34.3. Households leaving were 34.3. So there's a net gain. We're not arguing about that, but it's an important thing to recognize that people also leave in large numbers for all kinds of reasons, too, and that's an important part of this. Some are being displaced, some are graduating from Duke, some are moving elsewhere for other jobs and so on, or joining families where they are, moving back home because of the pandemic, whatever the case might be. There's another side of the migration story.
John, sorry, can I interrupt you just on this slide?
Please do.
You have fewer people coming to Durham every day than leaving. So that's not gonna cause population growth?
Right. You wouldn't expect that, right? So this is from the IRS, the county-to-county migration data, and the interpretation that I have of this is that it's the household sizes that are making up for that in some way. There's more to it, I'm sure, as well, folks that are maybe not reporting taxes in the same, maybe they're not showing up by filing taxes. But I think really the growth here is in that household number, in aggregate being somewhat larger families than those leaving, and it's also where the net increase is just by comparing leaving versus arriving here.
Okay. But the people are in households, right? The dataset should be...
Individual filers, and then the other is household filers. So these are two separate categories of that dataset. If you can imagine all people filing taxes, there are households, there are individuals, and together they are the complete 100%. So of those that are household filing, like joint filers, that's what that second row is.
Uh-huh, okay.
Does that make sense? It might not make total sense, I recognize that, too.
Yeah, okay. So people means individuals?
That's right. Like, if you filed as an individual.
Uh-huh, okay. Yeah, I will look into this data a little bit more. Do you already have a calculation of what that, of like, what the actual number would be for a year?
What was it? Can you say the last part again?
Do you have a calculation for what the number, an increase in population as predicted by this data for a year?
For any given year?
For, say, 2019, if you take average household size, turn that into humans, add these humans, add, subtract, and multiply by 12.
No, but that's a great exercise to think through, right? Like, that could be done, and it might be an estimate that starts to explain a little bit more, but it hasn't, it's not part of this, and I haven't really done that, no.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it's just, this seems weird.
Fair enough, yeah. Thanks, really great question, then. So how has housing supply changed? Over the last 12 years, we've added a lot of new homes. Looking only at newly subdivided parcels for 1, 2, 3, and 4 family homes, there's been a 10,000-unit increase since 2010. So in 2010, there were 66,000 parcels, this is just parcels, we're not talking about apartment buildings or anything, 66,000 parcels that were 1, 2, 3, or 4 family homes. And 2022, as of May of this current year, that's 76,000. So again, a 10,000-unit increase just in terms of those parcels being added to our community, newly-developed places. And that doesn't include apartment buildings, obviously, but the number of people per unit is what this slide is really showing you. So in 2000, the growth in housing was comparable. It was the same as the growth in population, and that's over the prior decade. So in 2010, there had been more growth in housing than there was in population, and by this decade, we're a little bit behind in terms of the growth in housing as compared to the growth in population, and that's 2.23 compared to 2.25 in 2010. So it's a little bit marginal. It's like, what does that really translate to? A similar question, perhaps, is what we just talked about. But what we don't really have here, I mean, I'm just acknowledging that's not a massive shift that would explain like a large gap in our supply, so to speak, right? But it's the data that we get from the Census Bureau that can plug into this.
John, does source, what's this, is this from the Census Bureau, this slide?
That's from the Census Bureau, occupied households, yeah, and the total population. So what we don't have, though, is good local data on vacancy, which would allow us to understand to what extent there's a shortage in housing overall and maybe access to units that aren't being leased and things like that, which is a painful gap in knowledge, I think, for us, too, in a lot of ways. We can casually observe that there might be higher vacancy rates in even newly-constructed buildings, older ones as well, but we just don't know that, and it seems like an important piece of the puzzle. So corporate investment, like I mentioned early on, and this is a very, I'll start off with a very generalized reference to what corporate investment is here, too. And I feel like there are valid critiques of, like, using everything as an LLC or something like that, right, in terms of corporate. So we'll talk also about out-of-state ownership briefly. So we'll talk also about out-of-state ownership briefly. But we came into this project of Who Owns Durham thinking specifically about corporate investment firms that were sort of this financialized property model, where it's an acquisition that goes into a portfolio, it's not locally managed, it's one of many, 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 many buildings on a large, you know, collection of portfolios, the performance of which is not really front and center to even the managers of it. And the full leasing up of all the units is actually itself not necessarily a high priority because it's a property to be flipped within a couple of years. And that happened a time and again, from 2016 through 2017, 18. Whole company is like Atrium, or Artesia, rather, which bought five or six properties in 2016 around Lakewood. They came and went in two years, and they weren't even here anymore. So stuff like that was happening. So that prompted us to look at just corporate ownership in general in certain ways. And it's gotten a lot of news in the last couple of years. You've seen it in the Business Journal, you've seen it elsewhere. So as of this past year, 15% of all homes sold in Durham were sold to investors. And that includes here, we are talking about corporate investors, including limited liability corporations, limited partnerships trusts, and other companies purchasing homes to make money from them, whether collecting rent or selling the property at a profit. That's a very broad definition, I recognize. But, so, yeah, as you can see here, 15% of all homes in 20, between 2020 and 2021 were sold to investors. Most of those were used as rental properties. Some of them are, again, these i-buyers, companies that were, you know, that do manage portfolios, manage housing as sort of like a software service. Corporate investment concentrated mostly, though, in predominantly black neighborhoods. And you can see that, that's what this map really shows you, the number of corporate purchases per 100 homes. And that's, in the darkest blue shading on that map, that's Grant Street area and around Central, and that's 3.4 to 4.8 homes for every 100 in the neighborhood that are corporate-owned. So you can see just that there is a, there's an inequitable distribution of where this is happening as well. And I said also that this out-of-state ownership lens is another way of looking at this. This is information that's in the Durham Compass now. You can look at out-of-state ownership of residential properties, but also of all properties in a particular community. And this is just, again, another proxy of saying that the control of that property is, is not local. It's been increasing a lot over the last few years, as you can see here. And that's having another impact on what level of influence in a neighborhood is coming from folks with much different economic interests than the ones who live around these properties. And I'll just, another little side note, too, about this, that you see this show up a lot in apartment complexes, maybe two. And there's been a very, very rapid exponential increase in the sale values of apartment complexes, grade B, C-class apartment buildings, like you see around Leon Street or in like Merriweather Drive. These are apartment buildings that are selling for like $42 million. I think, I said Merriweather Apartments is an example of this, I think, where I think they sold for $42 million recently. And that's, that's coming close to the sale value of the 15 middle floors of One City Center, right? So there is a really inflated sale value that exponentially grows. It's like, you know, $10, $20 million more each time it sells every few years. At what point is that so far beyond the tax value? And at what point is that, is that something that becomes a write-off on a, or short sale, like things we saw 10, 15 years ago, too, in the last real estate bubble burst? So there's, I think, kind of like, just a really important thing to pay attention there as well, what's happening with the way investment properties, especially apartment buildings, are dangerously out of control in terms of their prices. So I'll keep going. From 2000 to 2018, how did Durham's people manage the increased cost of housing here? This is sort of a bigger question about this. And again, questions that, we're not here to deliver necessarily answers in all these cases, sometimes these are just tensions. But what we see here is, number one, manufacturing jobs decreased by almost 40% over that 18 years. We've already talked about that a little bit. The number of food service and accommodation jobs is actually the largest growth that happened during that period of time then, too. 69% increase in terms of the number of jobs in food service and accommodation in Durham. Healthcare positions also grew a lot, 41%. We're going to talk about that in a minute, though. Average weekly wages for people in food service jobs in that 18 years, when you adjust for inflation, decreased. They were $390 a week in 2031 and 2018. And this is just before, you know, a couple of years before the pandemic started here. Average weekly wages for retail workers were 566 in the year 2000 and 573 in 2018. The, the increase of cost of living here obviously is not reflected in that information. To update that a little bit, since 2018, manufacturing jobs have increased some. This is, I think, a story, too, of some of the, the better opportunities of manufacturing work that's part of our landscape now, too, with like pharmaceuticals and other technological production, too. So there's, there's that side of the story. Retail jobs dropped by 1,000 during the pandemic, and that food service jobs during the pandemic dropped by 4,000. Healthcare jobs have actually increased to about 40,000 jobs in our community. And I'm going to keep moving to kind of stay relatively timely with y'all. But this is the health sector. And this, these data points aren't published anymore by the Department of Commerce. I think it's, at this point, it's redacted information because the sector is so completely owned by Duke University, Duke Health System, and the components of that, that they don't actually disclose those stats on their site right now. But as of 2018, this is what we can see. So the largest sector in our community, the number of jobs increased by 64% in this sector. And what you see is pretty straightforward here, that the, similar to retail and food service jobs, flat or declining wages over that period of time for nurses, people working in senior care nursing homes, same thing for family care, vocational rehab, childcare, et cetera. And then within the health sector, the high-end surgeon specialists growing their incomes, again, inflation-adjusted here, and people in home health, outpatient care, the larger, the higher-income professions actually saw an increase in their wages. So this is weekly wages compared to the median gross rent at the time. And you can see who's able to, to keep up with that. Rents in Durham have skyrocketed during the pandemic. And this is like, should anybody ever say skyrocketed in a presentation and be, and be okay with it? I think it's okay to do that a little bit right now. So pretty much everybody knows about this story. It's, it's on everybody's mind in their life. How much has that really happened? This is coming from data that we scraped over the last five, six years now from Craigslist and Padmapper. It includes new listings and older properties as well. And it's not, it doesn't reflect people's current rents who are not seeking to move or, you know, properties that aren't on the market. It's not in here, these are listings. But the chart shows the median cost of housing broken up by the number of bedrooms in the house through the first year of the pandemic. The most remarkable thing about rent price trends shown here is that while rents have been steadily increasing for years, they increased dramatically since the beginning of the pandemic, like literally in March, April of 2020, this is what happened. And so this comes at a point in time when 69% of Durham renting households were earning less than 80% of the area median income, too. That's actually from 2017, from prior work that we did using public use microdata to show that, you know, that most people who rent in Durham as of 2017 were people making 80% or less than the median income. Another way of looking at this is to see the median rents for each month. And then the blue line on here shows you when the pandemic, the first cases of COVID-19 happened in Durham in March 2012, 2020. And the median list, rent listings for each month prior to that, it's fairly clear, were in the 1,000 to 1,100 range. And as soon as the pandemic started, this happened, where these listings were increasing, you know, 50, 30, 25, 30% in some cases. But this is something, actually, if we were to look right now at the HUD dashboard for voucher projects as well, for voucher properties, the same thing happened. You'd see the same trend there, which I think is a fascinating piece of, of information, too. That's not in this slide deck, something I discovered recently by looking at their dashboard. I just want to put it out there because it seems like it's pervasive across rental properties, regardless of whether they're subsidized or not. Evictions, obviously, we talk a lot about evictions and trying to prevent them. And a typical year, Durham landlords have been filing about 1,000 a month in the few years before 2020. 2020 and 2021 were phenomenally different years. There were federal and state moratoria that, based on failure to pay, you couldn't evict tenants for that period of time, for a long period of time there. And you can see what that did to the numbers. It kept evictions at a very, very low rate for a long time, a very positive and inspiring kind of moment in time, actually. But that's ceased since the moratorium ended. And then what had happened after the moratorium, obviously, we had two rounds of emergency rental assistance as well, which sort of come on both sides of that purple dotted line there where the moratorium ended. But you can see what's been happening is a steady increase toward the, the prior trend. We're still lower than that, but in the last month, 611 evictions were filed. We're getting back to that comparable range, you can see, of what the prior years were like. And even though there are far fewer evictions, just a few landlords do crop up a lot. And even during the pandemic, there were some that evicted folks in large numbers monthly. And that's something that we've written a lot about through our newsletters over the last two years. And it's been local landlords as well since the, the moratorium ended, and those larger corporate enterprises as well. Our partner, Matt Banksen, who's, he'd been working with us for a while, made this chart to talk about how this is impacting different communities differently. So we look at the disparity in evictions based on highly segregated geography, where people are 66% or more people of color. In a given month, between 65 and 75% of evictions happen in census blocks that are 2/3 or more people of color. Census block is a really small area compared to what we're talking about in like tracts and things like that. We're talking about, like, one census, a census block, for example, is Duke Manor. And it's small areas, right? So 66% or more people of color, they're 75% of the evictions happening. Since 2017, if you're looking at half the population or more being people of color, it's 88%. And in, on the other side of this, as a point of comparison, that 2.6% of evictions have happened in predominantly white communities that are 2/3 or more white. I'm getting close to my last bits for y'all, and I appreciate your, your time and patience on, on some of this stuff. And I realize also that this stuff hits in certain ways, and there's not a lot of breath right now. And that's something that, that's a tension that I think we all kind of feel and carry in a lot of ways, and it's probably hard and provocative in certain ways, too. And that's something that time is at odds with sometimes. So just a recognition as well that I find this content highly emotional, and I know you do, too, and I think everybody should. It's a, as a relatively comfortable person, I think the discomfort of it is actually important, and I offer that discomfort to anybody who, who finds that they're not discomforted yet. So what do affordable rents look like? When we shared slides about affordability with the Affordable Housing Implementation Committee, this was a really important takeaway for that group, one of the most from the whole presentation. And it's been a primary takeaway of our work with the Bragtown Community Association and also from the Waltown residents, too. We think all future projects should look at this and consider this. If we're building housing for poor and working-class people in Durham, we should look at this. So this is, we've talked a lot about recently, I think all of us are thinking about the area median income and have that awareness now that it includes Chapel Hill as well. And as of the most recent HUD numbers, you see on the far left there, 100% of the area median income is $86,000. Durham County's median household income was $58,000 at that time, and the median household income in Bragtown was $33,000. So relatively comparable, area median income, 30% of the area median income is much closer to, you know, the median household income in Bragtown. It's actually very close to the 80% of median area, median income in Bragtown. But the point of this came down to just looking at what would those rents actually be? What would be affordable for those folks, people making those household incomes? So for Durham Chapel Hill AMI, 80% is a $1,700 a month rent. For people that are making 60% of that AMI, it's a $1,200, $1,300 monthly rent. It's not until you get down to that 30% that you see something, like half of that, you know, $648. If we're going to even just look at Durham County, the 60% AMI is $873. You see, start to see this gap here, at the top end of that, 100%. Somebody making the median household income in Durham would pay $1,455, whereas the AMI would accept, would propose that that, it would be $2,000, $2,000, a little bit more would be affordable. So this framing affordability for households around this AMI number is challenging, is difficult. And especially for people, let's say we're talking about putting a project in Bragtown and want people in Bragtown to live there, right? Maybe you're thinking about them moving out of Oxford Manor into a place of their own, that's, I don't know, down the street or something, newly affordable housing in Bragtown. Important topic. What could they afford? So just by the AMI standards, we're talking about 674 for folks in Bragtown that make 80% of their median income, people that are not the median income for Bragtown. And we're getting down to by 30% of that Bragtown median income, we're talking about $253 a month, which is what people who, who live in DHA properties are paying for rent every month. So DHA properties and public housing in particular, I'm just going to take a moment to talk about this. I won't say a whole lot about what's on this slide, actually, but it's there for you to look at. These are all the public housing projects, properties in Durham right now, and the most recent inspection scores and the date of those scores. Median rents, as I said, paid by DHA tenants are in the low $200. So scores less than 80, 80 require annual inspections per HUD rules, and a failing inspection score is 59 or less. We talk often about issues caused by supply not meeting demand and how this drives a shortage, which keeps people from buying or renting homes here. The story of how many people move here each day relates to this. How are we going to house everyone who wants to live in Durham? But what better expression of the demand that we truly know about than what we see here and what we know about our own public housing? It's not a demand induced by our efforts to attract new residents or corporate headquarters. It's a demand of our own current and in many cases, longtime neighbors who are trying against serious challenges to stay here. What I'm saying is that there is a 3,489-person waiting list for DHA units right now, and an 8,000-person waiting list for choice vouchers, acknowledging that there's sometimes duplication in the, the wait lists, people applying to different properties. But that's, that's a number. That's a specific number of people, right? And what we don't know about people moving here from other places in the world that like what they see about Durham, we don't know how many there are. We want them. But we know right now that there's 11,000 or more people here in these lists. And they want to get into these properties. So these families and individuals are Durham people who need more homes with median rents in the 200s. Pretty simple takeaway from that slide in, in my perspective. I'm just going to throw a couple more pieces out here before I try to wrap up. These are slides that come from a presentation that we did as Data Works about the failures of data. I would be wrong to not talk about the failures of data, and that they can often just completely omit whole communities. So this is the Few Gardens property in, as you can see, February 2004. Our institutions, all of them, are, are in the business of both raising and creating a new whole community. We've done this, we do this. It's, it's an important piece of our reality. So Few Gardens in February 2004, Few Gardens in May of 2004. We could show similar images of South Side, maybe recently North Gate Mall was feeling like a thing like this potentially, like what's going to happen? And it's a recurring feature of our community. We have various ways of either talking about it or not talking about it, but it's there, it's in the middle of us. What happens is it gets into collected pieces of news bits, right? We don't have, the problem with like trying to track down what the story is here, right? So WRL, one of the Durham, Durham eyesores soon will be history. Demolition of Few Gardens, the city's oldest housing project underway. People came out Thursday to watch. They even had a little cake to celebrate, and the families who used to live here in Few Gardens have been relocated. The problem will be gone, and it won't have to be an issue anymore. The families have been relocated. For us, as we talk about people and data, there's a big problem here that I need to just address as well. Where did people go? Under what conditions? Are they okay? The story's not over, right? There are references to crime statistics, broken windows, kind of perspective on what was going on that made it an eyesore that people didn't want to live with. And what data are doing in those narratives, though, is unclear if they drop the story before its full conclusion. We want to know that the people are safe. We want to know that they're okay, they're still in Durham, and they're doing better than they did previously. So who, the decision is made for who if we don't follow up with that conclusion. And there are even contested stories, obviously, about Few Gardens itself. So with the erasure of those resident voices, a story is cast as an intervention, but we don't understand if it's solved the problem. And this is an example that is in public media from Jeffrey Harris. This was in the Durham Voice. "It broke my heart. It killed me because everything we touched was destroyed. Where I lived, my school, everything that showed that I existed, the city government got rid of it." That's one man's perspective, and it's an important one because we talk about data points all the time, and we'd be tremendously remiss to not include the voices of folks who aren't at a podium in front of city council talking about this. who aren't at a podium in front of city council talking about this. And we talk a lot about units, things we can measure. I can measure buildings, I can measure the number of them. I can't measure that story, I can't tell you the pain that lives in this community. That's what I'm trying to deliver here a little bit. In my participation in the fray of data that you all consume, I can't omit the reality of this person individually right now. So reflections, and this is something that also wraps up all of our housing presentations for the Community Advisory, Citizens Advisory Commission, Affordable Housing Implementation Committee, and so on. To what extent is there a housing shortage? We don't know about vacancy is one of the key takeaways to me, I wish I knew better. Who owns rental housing now? Who should own rental housing? It's okay to ask who should, too, I think. What is a more appropriate standard for affordability than those we rely on? So the Metro AMI, the standards that set home rents and federal poverty standards, all of that. Like, what should we choose to do based on what we think our outcomes should be for the people we want to protect the most? And what can Durham do to stop evictions and address the underlying issues driving unaffordability? Down at the bottom of this, there is a churn of displacement that isn't being addressed. It was for a little while with that moratorium. And then finally, what would a long game, we've planned a lot in big, like really, really large-scale, like generational investments and changes in our community. But what would it look like for a long game that provides security of tenure to poor and working-class Durmites? What would that look like? Affordability always leaves that question of for who, right? Let's name for who, and, and make it happen, I think, is kind of what we think of often in these gaps that data leave for us. And affordability is a very imprecise thing for data minds, so I'll just leave it there. And thank you again for all your time. I know it's late, and if there's time for questions, I'm glad to, to field or, or wait until another time, but that's what I have brought for y'all today. Finally, though, these slides, I have notes for all of them. Folks have given me feedback on them over the last few days. And I will share that Google Slide version of this that has the notes in it for y'all to have in your pockets. If you think there's anything useful in here to, to kind of plug into that narrative that you're working on from the retreat, you'll have it in your hands. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, John, so much for that. One of those times where I'm at a sort of a loss for words, when you start talking about you're going to do a deep dive in the housing. And now we've actually dived in. It is very sobering for that first time. I just want us to just kind of leave it there for us to think about, and we can have some discussions further. And so we will now move to selling our agenda. Oh, that's right, boards and commissions.
Good evening, everyone. The council nominations are as follows. The Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau discovered Durham mayoral appointment is Michael D. Page. The Durham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners mayoral appointment, Kimberly V. Williams. Workforce Development Board mayoral appointment, Marshall Williams. The Durham Planning Commission appointment, Stephen J. Valentine. Recreation Commission mayoral appointment, Kenneth Barnes. Racial Equity Commission appointment, Ward Three, is Delvin M. Davis. Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee appointment at large, Desmond Gatling. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you so much. I will turn now to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the Durham City Council, I have for your agenda, the consent agenda would be items 1 through 18, items 20 through 23, item 25, and item 33. For the general business agenda, I have item 24. And for general business agenda, public hearings, I have items 27 through 31.
Madam Manager, I'm sorry, Madam, the item for the social, that's 24, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm thinking wheels, I need, yeah.
Let's stay on GBA.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Is there a motion and a second?
Move.
Second.
So move by Councilwoman Freeman, I think I heard Councilwoman Johnson on this end to second it. We will conduct this vote verbally with an A, an aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
My sign aye. All those opposed have the same right. Hearing none, our motion, we have settled our agenda. Are there any other items to come before this council today? Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned at 5:34 on October 6, 2022. Bull City Strong. Hold on a second.